Yes.
All right. Called to order the meeting of the Verona Common Council for Wednesday, August 12th, 2020 at 7:04 PM. We'll begin with the roll.
All the person Cronin?
Present.
All the person Journey?
Here.
All the person Kim?
Here.
All the person Cole?
Here.
All the person Posey?
Here.
All the person Ricky?
Here.
All the person Ryan?
Here.
All the person Tushay?
Present.
All right, everyone's here. That's great. Next we'll move on to item three, which is a public comment. Mr. Sayer.
So I have 10 people that have signed up for tonight. We'll start first with Dan Atkins. I don't see Dan, Dan's name in the audience. So Dan, if you're there, raise your hand. Okay, I see Mark, who works, is working for Dan. So this is Mark Sunday.
Salt A.
Mark, we can hear you. I mean, can't see you.
Okay.
Oh, now you're muted again. Okay.
You guys are muted.
Uh, I will unmute.
Trying to, yeah.
No, it won't let me unmute. Oh, there we go.
Everybody see me okay?
You're good to go.
Okay. Just very briefly, we're just trying to do a, an addition onto the bike shop here. We, we're, need a little more room. I have a daughter who's joined me in the business now, and I like to have it well set up for him. So we're working with the Clery folks to get an addition on and expand our, eventually then expand our showroom into our old shop area, expand our shop area into our old warehouse area, and then, and then have a, have a new warehouse area so that we have the sufficient amount of room. Um, I've spoken with the neighbors, and they are on board with what we'd like to do. And I think you guys can see it all there. It'll look just pretty much the same as it does, just a little bit longer, and would be great for our, our purposes to, to keep operating. I'm happy to answer any questions or anything. Anybody would need a bike?
Always got to be selling. Any questions for the public speaker from the council? Seeing no hands? Thank you very much.
Well, great. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dan. All right, next up, I have Ted Higgins. If you could raise your hand. Thank you.
All right, can you guys see me?
Yep.
All right, great. I am calling, this is my office at the fire station. I'm on duty tonight, so I hope we don't get interrupted. But thank you, guys, for, for allowing me to speak. Council, you guys do wonderful work, and Mark seems like a good guy. Go for the bike shop. I'm with him. So I wanted to update you guys on the status of our ongoing contract negotiation with your firefighters. For those that don't know, or I should reintroduce myself. I'm the, I'm the business agent basically for firefighters local 311. We represent six members of the Madison, or the Verona Fire Department, right? You have three career lieutenants and three career firefighter inspectors. So the scope of our collective bargain agreement just is for those six employees, the three lieutenants and the three firefighters. And so we've had, as you guys are aware, we've had a prolonged contract negotiation. And I think the last time, I know you guys wanted to close session, we were at the mediation phase of, of, of the deal. And we were brought in, you guys brought in Kyle Gulya. And just to update you guys where we are with that, the city's offer was, at the end of negotiations, our standard negotiations, we were at, the only thing we're at odds with the, of the deals is just the percent raises year to year, right? So three-year deal, we were at two, 2%, 5%, 5%. And the city was at 2%, 4%, 4%. So we go to mediation, and the, the numbers that were given to us there were two, two and three, which was quite a bit lower than where we had been. And what I wanted to talk to you guys about was, is an explanation why. Because those numbers, admittedly, they do seem like for normal year-to-year raises, they seem a lot higher than they would be. We're fully on, you know, acknowledge that. But I think we need to talk about the dollar figures behind these, because we are only talking about six members. And when we left the bargaining table and headed to mediation, the goal of that is to get a voluntary agreement for both sides, right? And so we have come down, we, we were asking the, the city was to meet us halfway. So halfway in between, we were at fives the last two years, the city was at four. We, we came down and said, asked the city just to, to, to meet us in the middle at four and a half. And here's why that's important. Right now, the career firefighters in Verona are, are, will be, if the city accepts our deal, meet us halfway at two, four and a half, four and a half, will become the least paid firefighters in Dane County. So that's something we were trying to avoid with the two, five, five. So we will now be the least compensated firefighters in Dane County. We can't even find, in the state of Wisconsin, lieutenants that are paid less than the Verona lieutenants are paid, right now, to put it in perspective. So we have, one of our lieutenants is a 17-year veteran of the Verona Fire Department. He's a lieutenant like I am, but, but for Verona. He's making $59,000 this year. A Fitchrona paramedic with one year on the job makes 60. That's a problem. And that's why those numbers seem so large, those percentage increases. So right now, we have a situation where you have an officer who's been with the city 17 years, and potentially 19-year-old out of M A T C can come in, and he's supervising them on a call, and they're making more money than he is. We're very happy with the Fitchrona contract, by the way. Police officers, that disparity even grows even more. Right now, we have, if you take, just on average, an average five-year Verona firefighter makes about $55,000 right now. That same five-year employee for Fitchrona EMS makes $67,000. So that's $12,000 difference. Police officer, so seventeen-year lieutenant will be making 59, almost 60. A, a sergeant in the police department, which of those ranks are lieutenant of the fire and sergeant, is making 89,000, close to $89,000. So we're talking about a large amount of money here in between those differences. And that, that's why we have been working for years now to build these contracts up. And we even say at the bargaining table, you know, the only way to eat an elephant, because this is a huge disparity that we know we're never going to make up in one contract ever. We're going to have to take a series of steps over time to, to, to do that, take those bites out of that element, elephant. And that's what we're trying to do. So that's why it's important for our, for our members to feel valued and to feel that the city recognizes that, I guess. It's just, they just even want the acknowledgement to know that, like, it doesn't sit right with our firefighters that these brand-new employees and, and, and police infantry, and the paramedics are making, not even just a little bit more, but substantially more money. And it should, should be said, too, that both the paramedics and the firefighters work almost 2,500 hours a year. It's a lot of hours. And that's almost 600, 554 hours more than the police work. So there's a lot more hours involved, too, away from family and stuff. And then for the disparity of pay to be so large, that's, that's where we're coming from. So now, when we talk about actual dollar amounts, when we were at, the city's last offer before mediation at two, four, four, right, and we were at two, five, five, we've since amended, like, like, like I said earlier, we've come down to meet you guys halfway at, at four and a half. That difference over the course of three years between a two, four, four, where we were at the bargaining with you guys, and where we, to a two, four, five, where we are now, that difference for every employee, for the three firefighters and the three lieutenants, over a three-year period, okay, is $5,422. So divide that by three, that's $1,800 a year in our difference of our offers between local 311 and the city of Verona. If you want to break that down, that's $302 per member. That's it. This is all we're talking about. The mediator, you know, he, the, from the WRC's been kind of laughing about it, because we are kind of fighting over a very small amount of money. And I know that you guys have done an incredible job as a council to help out the community. I think it's, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars you guys have given to small businesses, which is tremendous, and should be, should be commended that you guys have been doing that. Or the, I don't know, Adam, it was fourteen or eighteen thousand dollars to have someone help the, help Chief Mahaka out, you know, for, for three months of work, let's say it was 15. I don't have it in front of me, but you had no problem, you know, spending that, investing that 1,500 into, into Dan's development, and to, to have a better chief, which again, we're totally for it. We're not against that at all. I guess all we're saying is, all we're asking for is an additional $5,000 over three years, $300 per person. And that will help keep us, we're still going to be at the bottom of the pay rate, and we're still going to be significantly below the paramedics and the, and the, and the police. We understand that. We just don't think that, you know, if, if we come to an impasse now in mediation, and we go to an interest arbitration as the next step, only one, that, that's going to cost, I would say, both sides, between local 311 and the city, up to $50,000. Because not only do you have your lawyer that you're paying $300 or whatever an hour is, you're paying experts, you're paying actuarials, you're paying the arbitrator, and you're talking about a process that's like the litigation that can go out six to 12 months. And those bills add up really fast. In fact, your lawyer, Kyle, is doing one in Caledonia right now, and I think they're up to around that $50,000 mark in the city. Different issues, but these things are really expensive. And it just seems like we would hate to get to the point where we're spending, the city would spend $50,000 to not spend 3,000 on their first responders during a pandemic. And that's just something we, I want you guys to think about those numbers, and say, is this what, you guys have been excellent stewards of the taxpayers, of, of the dollars during this pandemic. And I just don't see that your constituents, really anybody wants to, to know that the, the city is taking that route to fight, to fight their first responders, especially when it would, you know, we don't advertise how poorly they're paid. But, you know, I guess, I guess that's where I'm coming from. I, I think you guys understand the, the point I'm trying to make. So we're talking about a very small amount of money. And I would just like to implore, when I know it's, I don't think it's on today's agenda for you guys to talk about it, but it'll probably be in the next two weeks. I'm happy to come back. But I just think it would go a long way for, for your firefighters, who right now are feeling quite overwhelmed with this whole process. I mean, not just the pandemic and everything related to that, but just that this process has taken this long and is headed in this, in this direction. So I'd be willing to answer, if you guys have any questions, I'd be, we'd be happy to answer them. And you can also, you know, get ahold of me offline, too. But if there's anything about those numbers that, just to repeat, I mean, we're talking about $302 per year per person. So we're trying to avoid both your side and our side making lawyers rich. And meanwhile, that money could have been spent elsewhere, right, to actually help the city and to help our members. So that's what we're trying to avoid. Thank you for your time. And if, if there are any questions, be happy to, to answer them.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate the offer to answer questions. However, since this was not on the council agenda, council, council members, myself can't comment on it. So.
You're right. You told me that. Okay. I, I'm sorry then. Yeah, Luke did tell me that. Well, I'll leave it at that again. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Sayer. Who do we have next?
Next up is Mike Samuels. Thanks, Mike.
I am unmuted. Would you like me to start video also?
Yeah, if you could, that'd be great.
That should do it. Good evening to you all. My name is Mike Samuels. I am here with Andev Group for the development that is proposed for the Burke property at Wayland and Liberty Drive. We have our development team available for tonight, and we look forward to the presentation. We are hoping that we can get some direction from you that is a little bit more definitive than what happened in the last, in the plan commission meeting. We are very desirous of building you a nice assisted living complex, which I think is well-needed in the city. And we look forward to trying to work with you to make a viable and substantial development for you. We have our architect, we have our civil engineers, and we have our operations head here available to answer any questions. I know that the staff, I assume, will be putting on the presentation. And we will be here to support it. As I said, we're looking for direction from you. I don't have really anything else in terms of just a public statement, but I look forward to hopefully interacting with you during our discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Sayer, who's next?
Thanks, Mike. Uh, next up, I have JJ.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Adam. Great. Good evening to the members of the Common Council. My name is JJ Liley, and I'm with ICAP Development. We have submitted for you tonight the concept plan located at 233 Wildcat Way for the city's review. ICAP is excited to be working with the community of Verona and is hopeful to bring a new development to the city. A little background on ICAP, we are a Milwaukee-based full-service real estate company with experience in developing real estate over a wide spectrum of project types. And then specifically, as it relates to the concept plan we have submitted for your review tonight, ICAP has a track record of successfully completing several of these types of projects. The summary provided by Adam and Catherine captures the overall scope and thoughts of the concept site plan for this development. But if you have any questions or need clarification, feel free to ask as you address this matter on your agenda tonight. Once again, I greatly appreciate the Common Council taking the time to review the concept plan and look forward to your feedback. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, I have Ron Trachtenberg.
Oh, this is Ron Trachtenberg. Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Can hear you. We cannot see you.
Hello?
Um, we can hear you, but we can't see.
Can you hear me? Well, that's okay. I'm not that beautiful anyway. I represent St. Ambrose, and we have our team here tonight, all of which are going to make a, a presentation. The area that I want to talk about is access. We are aware that staff would favor a joint access and joint parking with St. Andrews. The church has told you that you, the church will not permit a joint access and joint parking with the church. So the other option is silent street. And the question is, what ultimately does the city want to do with silent street? And we can work with any scenario that you do with silent street. If you keep the right-of-way as a street, we can have our access off silent street. And in the interim, until silent street is built, we could, through an easement, run a driveway out to Main Street. Now, if you decide to vacate silent street, we could run it, our access would take out, be in the old right-of-way. If you want to vacate part of it, but keep 20, 30 feet for a bike path, we could then also run the access south of the bike path access. So what we're saying is, we believe that the best access is south of the cemetery. We believe that our traffic engineer shows that it works. And we can believe, we believe we can work with any scenario that the city ultimately decides to do work with silent street in order to make this project feasible. And we would plan out, we hope the city will ultimately decide what to do with silent street so that we can come up with a definitive plan. But in the interim, we can work with the city and leave options open. I'd be glad to answer any questions with respect to that.
Uh, thank you. I figure we can, once we get to this item in the agenda, people have questions, we can call people if necessary.
Going to make one further comment, and I'm sorry I didn't hit it. I don't know if there are existing utilities under silent street, or the city plans on putting underground utilities under that right-of-way. Again, in any of our scenarios, there wouldn't be any problems with the city having underground easement rights to either maintain or install utilities, underground utilities in that existing right-of-way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Next up, I have Grant. Grant Emel.
Hello.
Hi, Grant.
Uh, my name is Grant Emel, and I'm a founding board, board member of St. Ambrose Academy, who has submitted a concept plan to you on 301 North Main Street, adjacent to St. Christopher Parish. St. Ambrose Academy is an accredited, private, and affordable Catholic junior high grade six to eight and preparatory senior high school, right now located on Madison's West Side. Since 2003, we have been providing a liberal arts or classical mode of instruction that develops exceptional tools of independent learning and analytical thinking, and works to free students from transient societal fashions. Our Catholic identity permeates every subject and experience to form truly Christian leaders of today and tomorrow. Skilled and caring teachers provide highly individualized attention to small class sizes, where a diverse student body reap lifelong benefits and self-confidence and achievement. We have families from around Dane County that look to us to support their academic and formational goals. Again, St. Ambrose offers students from diverse backgrounds a classical education in a warm and supportive Catholic community. Classical education leverages the unique strength of the liberal arts, developing young people's natural capacities for knowledge, logical reasoning, and expression, equipping them to become critical thinkers, self-learners, and inspired leaders. Though we operate independently of any parish, St. Ambrose Academy collaborates with the Diocese of Madison's Office of Catholic Schools. We have outgrown our space and have spent some years looking for a new home. We think we have found one in Verona. The St. Christopher Parish site in Verona offers all that we foresee needing for the next phase of our growth. We have an assembled and outstanding team of professionals, including our architect Kirk Keller, our civil engineer Wade Wise, our traffic engineer John Bieberitz, Father Scott Emerson from St. Christopher Parish, and our attorney, who we already talked to, Ron Trachtenberg, to assist in this project. We make ourselves available to you this evening to present our work to date and to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sayer.
Thanks, Grant. All right, next up, I have Kirk.
For some reason, it had to reboot. Thank you. I'd like to repeat three quick comments I made at the Plan Commission, and then close with just a, a quick comment on design for, and the architect for St. Ambrose. I'm with Plunkett Racech Architects here in Madison. We're one of the leaders in school designs in, in the community. And the three comments I made at the Plan Commission had to do with the drawings that have been reviewed by the city were done in steps. We needed to do a concept drawing that you have for your review first. And that allowed us to test out options that kind of Ron talked about with the traffic study, and allowed us to then turn it over to the traffic study to come to a solution. So in the middle, you have the traffic study itself. And that pointed out that various options could work, and we'd be glad to work with the city on those. Then third, you have conceptual floor plans for the building that confirm the building size at about 13,000 square feet to, to start with as a two-story building. It's a modest building. And the phases after that would either be a middle-school-sized gym or continuing growth in the academic area. So they don't exactly match up, but they were, so they were done in that process purposely. I would like to point out, just as you consider design, and since I, I, I feel I know Verona well with the many friends there, I am a resident of Madison. But Wade will talk a little bit about how we need to improve the site. There are drainage issues. There are guidelines that we, of course, need to follow and intend to follow to improve the site and improve drainage. But we're also looking to engage the city to understand how we're providing a good design. And it's important to me as an architect that you have a very strong presence as you come into the city on your Main Street, and that is St. Christopher's. And we want to respect that. And we want to stay secondary to it. And we need to stay away from, you know, residences. We, we feel that we're, in general, coming up with a, a design direction that works well and can continue to be developed. I look forward to that continuing discussion, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer.
Okay, next up, I have Wade.
Good evening, everyone. Wade Wise, Wiser Engineering. We are representative of the civil engineering for the project, as well as professional land surveying. We've been working with the project team here to come up with a good solution for, obviously, St. Ambrose, our client, but also, you know, the city and the adjacent residents as stakeholders in the project as well. The main thing that I want to touch on tonight is the stormwater management design, which is very much still in process, but has come a long way. We've done site investigations to identify soil infiltration rates, and we feel good about those. They're actually very favorable for infiltration in the sites. We're happy, we have uncovered that as part of our investigation. And we've also listened, as part of the Plan Commission and our dialogue with city staff, the concerns of the adjacent property owners is specifically to our east. I think it's noteworthy, from a stormwater management perspective, you know, the city obviously has a very robust ordinance as relates to that. And designing for that is not taken lightly. Specifically, as it relates to the properties to the east, there is a portion of our proposed area that, as it exists today, kind of contributes to the watershed area that flows east. Our desire and our analysis and where we're heading is, most of our stormwater management will be connected to a storm sewer system that does exist in the silent street right-of-way north of our property. So our idea would be to grade the site appropriately, convey stormwater runoff to stormwater management facilities, and then ultimately connect to the storm sewer system. So the improvements we are proposing are certainly aiding in the discussion and the remedy to long-term less water going to the east. So it's, it's, it's a major thing we've looked at, and we've heard from you, and we're looking at further as we design the project. Other utility hookups, water is relatively simple. Again, it is in the silent street right-of-way in the north for our connection. Sanitary sewer is a little bit more difficult, but we have a couple of public utility connection options. And also a perhaps private sanitary interceptor main sewer that would be a better and more economically desirable. And that's one of the options we're pursuing for utilities. Lastly, we are working on the CSM. We have prepared a CSM. Will obviously need coordination with the city of Verona to hopefully vacate or whatever route you might take as it relates to silent street. But in preparing the CSM, we're looking forward to working with you on how we can. on how we can prepare that to meet the needs of both St. Ambrose and the city. And I'll be available for questions throughout.
Thank you. Mr. Sayer.
Okay, next up, we have John. Thanks, John.
There we go. Apologies for not having the webcam with this computer. As previously mentioned, my name is John Bieberitz from Traffic Analysis and Design. We completed the traffic impact study that you all received. That was dated June 2, 2020. And we worked with a city traffic engineer to complete that. We worked directly with Jess Billmeyer through the study process and developed a workable solution for both the open year and expected maximum capacity to the school. Both Jess and I agreed upon a workable solution with a single access driveway to Main Street to be located on the north side of the property. This could either be within the Silent Street Road Reservation, or just south that roadway reservation. The traffic analysis showed that a single access to Main Street would work without a need for a secondary access. A secondary access or driveway connection to Silent Street to the east is not recommended for vehicle or emergency vehicle traffic. In fact, the fire department also does not need a connection to Sound Street to the east, which was confirmed last week. The connection to Sound Street to the east, although shown on previous site plans, has been removed. That will not be pursued, just so everyone's on the same page with that. As Wade says, I'll also be available for questions throughout the night regarding traffic in this traffic study. And I'm happy to work with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Sayer.
Okay, last speaker is Father Scott.
Good evening to all of you. Thank you very much for letting me speak to you for a couple of minutes this evening. I was the former parochial administrator of St. Christopher Parish over the last number of months, and remain on, I'm no longer administrator of St. Christopher, but I remain on to assist in this project and negotiations with St. Ambrose. St. Ambrose approached us a number of months ago to consider having the school be built on the three-acre property that is given in your packet tonight. And we certainly want to support Catholic education, and certainly are very supportive of St. Ambrose Academy coming. But yet, I just want to make, want to make a point also that we are separate organizations. Although we are both Catholic organizations, we are a Catholic church and they are a Catholic school. We don't have any, other than our relationship and the use of the sacraments in which the students come to mass at the parish, the use of confession at the parish, having a priest as a chaplain for the school itself, and having that priest nearby is certainly helpful. We are two separate organizations, and the financial support for the church is very much separate and completely a different organization and a different board of directors than of St. Ambrose. We've been working towards an agreement for a number of months. And certainly, we are supportive of the school coming, not only for the parish, drawing families to our Catholic parish, drawing families into Verona to attend this classical education school. But also, it allows the students to be, to come here who are very bright and very dedicated, and are dedicated to their community as well, both in service to the parish, but in service to the community at large. It's been difficult for communication a little bit over here during coronavirus season. But certainly amongst the leadership of St. Christopher, we have a strong support of St. Ambrose, and would love to see them join next to our parish. But yet, understanding that we are both two separate organizations, and for the future of St. Ambrose as well, and what happens there, we want them to have their independence going full. So I'll be here the rest of the evening, and if you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sayer, was that the last public speaker you mentioned?
Correct.
Okay. And with that, we will move on to item four, which is approval of the minutes from the July 27, 2020 Common Council meeting. Questions, comments, or motions?
Move approval?
Motion by Alder Ricky? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole, I think. Last chance for corrections to the minutes. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the July 27, 2020 Common Council meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? The minutes are approved. We will move on to item five, which is mayor's business. I don't have anything under there. We will move on to item six, which is announcements. Are there any announcements from the council? Alder Posey.
Yes, I'd just like to announce there's a postcard that went out to neighbors in the area of the new Sugar Creek development. It probably even hasn't arrived at their homes yet. From Steve Brown Apartments and the Alexander Company, there will be a meeting hosted by them about the Sugar Creek Elementary School redevelopment project. And that will be on August 26, 2020, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. on Zoom. I'm also working with the senior sire to try and get it out, because I know I've heard some of these meetings have not been heard about by our senior population, because they're not getting the messages. So I am working to see how many channels we can get this out through. So this is the start of it, and like I said, this postcard probably hasn't even arrived in homes yet because it just went out the other day. So.
Thank you for pointing that out. Other announcements from the council? Seeing no further hands, we will move on to item seven, the administrative report. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. I don't have too much tonight. We have a finance committee meeting next Monday night, so we are into budget season. The finance committee meeting, finance committee will be meeting pretty much every Monday from now on until the budget's adopted. So that process is in the works, and that's all being held by, via Zoom. We have a board review meeting on August 24 at 6:00 p.m. At that meeting, Dean Peters, the city assessor, will be reporting on the evaluation process and hearing procedures for any board review hearings that may come up. Most likely, those will come up this year because we are in a revaluation this year. We have open book scheduled for September 10, and then board review is scheduled for Tuesday, September 29 at 5:30 p.m. So just, I guess, more importantly, mark that September 29 on your calendars. I believe I sent out a Zoom invite on that one as well. But these will be conducted virtually, open book. I believe that's going to be conducted, solve it virtually and solve it in person. So we'll make the accommodations necessary to keep people safe. Once again, the 2020 census is ongoing. If people have not filled that out, any chance you can get, please remind people to fill that out. That's very important. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Any questions for Mr. Sayer? Seeing none, yes, definitely, if you haven't filled out the census, please go and do that. You will be helping your community and yourself. With that, we will move on to item eight, which is the engineers report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. For the Well Six Pumping Station construction, MGNB has continued to be delayed on the natural gas installation, which has slowed progress of HVAC completion and testing. The cabinets and countertop are installed in the testing lab. The contractor is continuing to work on miscellaneous electrical HVAC and finishing items. Asphalt paving is planned for mid-August. The contractor has requested to wait on planting trees, shrubs, and ornamental grasses until September for better survivability. Well startup is delayed until the gas service is installed and gas piping completed. For the Verona Area High School Construction Traffic Improvements Project, all project roads are open to traffic, with some traffic lane restrictions anticipated in the next couple of weeks or so to complete remaining punch list and rework items. For county highway PD construction from Woods Road to County Highway M, all work is completed, traffic control has been removed, and a few minor punch list items remain. For the Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon Project, the project has begun and is near completion, and a few small punch list items remain. And finally, for the Woods at Cathedral Point Phase One, grading activities continue, and sanitary sewer construction started end of July. The new 18-inch sanitary sewer connection is scheduled to be completed by, I guess, the end of last week. And the contractor intends to regularly work on Saturdays, starting this past Saturday. So with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions on the engineers report? Seeing no hands, we will move on to item nine, which is committee reports. First up, we have 9A Finance Committee. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to pull up my sheet here. Just give me one second. I lost it when I clicked on the picture of all of us. Let's see, where'd it go? First of all, I'd like to make a motion for the payment of the bills in the amount of $1,552,108.41.
Motion by Alder Kemp? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp.
Yes, just for the sake of discussion and explanation, there's a payment of bond trust services in the amount of $233,950. That's our 2019 debt payment. Page three, there's also a payment of $129,718 to Farmer Savings Bank for TIF 4, that's the pay-go payment for Keller Burke. We have a $309,030 second quarter payment for the Madison Metro Sewer, $330,061 for the County Highway PD reconstruction payment to Payne and Dolan, and then a $70,000 payment for a second quarter room tax to the Verona Area Chamber.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing no hands, all those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion passes. Alder Kemp.
Yes, the next, I'd like to make a motion regarding the bar and restaurant COVID-19 support payment support program applications.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Posey, I believe. Alder Kemp.
Yes, again, Mr. Mayor, for the sake of explanation, I believe there were two applicants this round on the COVID support program, one of which, as you can recall, we require that there not be second locations in another community. So for this round, there was one applicant that qualified, and it was the Drafthouse Bar. Committee is recommending that we offer them the maximum amount of $4,000 at this time.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the recommended applicant for the bar and restaurant COVID-19 support program, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion passes. Anything further from finance?
No, that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 9B, Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Alder Ricky.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve a temporary premises description amendment for Toot and Kate's LLC doing business as Toot and Kate's Wine Bar, 109 West Main Street, to include additional space on the front stoop area of the building and the sidewalk terrace, with conditions that the sidewalk terrace area only be used, no overlapping into the actual sidewalk area. And also a condition that they include, that Toot and Kate's include the insurance and indemnification recommended by the city administrator and city attorney, as well as ensure, with the premises description amendment being valid through November 15, 2020.
Motion by Alder Ricky? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. Alder Ricky.
So the description for this item is that the request is to amend the premises description to include more tables and the, I guess, one more table on the stoop in the front of the building, and to include tables on the terrace area between the sidewalk and the street, including a fence as just sort of a visual barrier between the street and the curb area of the terrace. And we had some discussion about safety and just would be more comfortable approving this with the conditions specified. And wish them the best. We want their business to succeed, and we hope that this helps.
Thank you. I have one quick question. Alder Ricky, was the applicant at the public safety meeting, and if so, did they seem like this was a workable solution?
I believe they were not present. They didn't speak with us during the meeting, anyway. Mr. Sayer has more information about that.
Mr. Sayer.
So, I mean, obviously, the insurance part was not discussed with them ahead of time. So the purpose of the insurance is to, since it's on city right of way, basically indemnify the city if there is a potential claim or something happens there, and then also making sure there's sufficient insurance that if it is a claim, that we'd be, that should be covered as well. So that's the intent of that requirement. But no, that was not discussed with her ahead of time.
Understood. Alder Kemp.
Can we, can we pass this without having had that conversation?
Mr. Sayer, you want to take a crack at that?
You could. I mean, it puts, it puts some, puts the city with some potential liability. The concern is when you're in the city right of way, that if there is a claim made on the city, we allow it to happen, and the intent is to ensure that, if something does happen, that we're protected.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying, can we pass it with the, with the addition that they have to have the, you know, sufficient insurance to make sure that, you know, it's essentially on them?
I believe that was one of the conditions Alder Ricky specified. So we should be covered, if that's what you're asking.
What was that?
I believe that was part of the motion that Alder Ricky made, so we should be covered from that perspective. Okay. Alder Corning, and then Alder Journey.
Um, two, I guess, one question. Is there parking in front of where these tables are going to be? And if so, are there going to be any restrictions for people being not allowed to park there?
Mr. Sayer.
Thanks. It's, there's a turn lane there. I'll pull the map up here real quick, if you can bear with me for two seconds. But there's a turn lane right in front of the business there, so I'm pulling up right now. So the space they'd be looking at would be between these two poles. You have the no parking pole, and you have the pole that is a light pole. And they'd be looking at that space right in between there. So no, there's no parking there, but it's a turn lane.
Alder Journey.
So I am all for supporting Toots and Cakes, just to start off. And I went ahead and walked that area a little bit this week. And I know they already have an agreement with Gucci Pucci along the front end of the building. But then if you go around the corner, that's still all part of Gucci Pucci fenced in. So it looks like there, you know, could possibly be two other tables there. Then there's also a blocked-off drive-through between Toots and Cakes and Schmidt Law Offices. And that space is apparently not being used. So I don't know if there'd be something, it would be possible if they might use some of that space instead of going on the sidewalk.
Mr. Sayer.
So the first part of it, kind of going around the corner, Gucci Pucci, the challenge you create is that, I believe, the bartender or the person serving has to be within eyesight of that person. So once you wrap that corner, the person serving the alcohol would not be able to see that person around the corner, which is, I believe, a statute requirement. So that's where you kind of get the challenge of, you know, even having on the front stoop is stretching that slightly. But I think you've almost completely violated that order or statute requirement if you're around the corner, because then you really can't see that person. So that's, like I said, statute requirement where the bartender or the person serving has to be able to. has to be able to visually see that person that they're, and provide that alcohol to. The, the alley is owned by Tom Schmidt. I've talked to Tom over the last two or three years about using that alley. You know, Tom, Tom owns it. Tom actually owns the, the blacktop area in front of that barricade up to the sidewalk, where it kind of changes from the colors, or where it goes from asphalt to concrete. Tom has no interest in leasing that. Tom has no interest in letting them use that space. He has just a variety of concerns, which we don't need to get into. But the, the bottom line is, I've, I've tried every option to try to help Toot and Kate's, the, try to use that, and it unfortunately hasn't, hasn't worked. And that's, it's his private property, so he, he has that right. But I know his staff, we've, we've taken about every angle we could at that, and unfortunately, it hasn't happened.
Alder Touche.
Thank you. You know, this came up last time when we allowed the tables to happen outside, even extend to the left side. And I, I still have serious concerns about the public safety aspects of putting tables right on the street. It's a turn lane. There's moving cars there. Really easy for somebody to accidentally either step out, have part of their body hanging out. You know, it, I also walked it. It's, it's really not a very wide path. Has a lot of potential for impeding on the sidewalk. And as much as I want to support the businesses, I, I think, I think my position on that's pretty clear as far as, you know, that, that the things the city are doing to try to help these businesses stay afloat. But we've, we've got a big public safety issue. And as much as it's great that we can serve some wine to people sitting right on the curb, unless there's some way to kind of prevent someone from accidentally tipping out into the street and potentially getting hit, I, I think, I think it's really careless of the city to approve this. Thank you.
I have Alder Ryan, then Cole, then Cronin.
So I just wanted to say I commend the Public Safety Committee for thinking outside the box. I do think it's important to support our local small businesses. I absolutely take Alder Touche's concerns into consideration as well. I, I guess my personal view is that your risk is probably mitigated by the fact that there's traffic lights there, and so people tend to slow down coming into that intersection. But in any case, I think it's a good decision, and I am supportive of permitting this, so.
Thank you. Oh, we got Alder Cole and Alder Cronin.
So I went, have also been by there several times and walked around that area. And I went at, you know, a higher, higher traffic type kind of time. And since there isn't any parking there, I mean, there's a turn lane that's kind of starting a little bit past there, but nobody really got close to the curb. And since it, we're coming up onto like a, a stoplight area, people are not driving super fast. And then most, when they're mostly busy, when people would be sitting out there, would be the evening times when there's hardly any traffic along that road. And I know, like, the tables that she wants to put out are small bistro tables that have two chairs, and she talks about facing them towards the street. That way, nobody would like to back. And she's planning on putting fencing up as well. And I'm, I'm, we have to remember, too, this is a temporary solution. This is only going to be for, like, a couple months at the absolute most until it gets cold. Because if these restrictions are still in place when it becomes cold, and, I mean, and they aren't allowing anybody inside, then they're back to no business again. And I just want to do what we can to think outside the box and help our small businesses survive in this, you know, unprecedented time.
Alder Cronin.
So speaking to the safety issue, can we or have we specified what kind of fence we would want to see put up? Because are we talking about, like, a plastic snow fence? Or are we talking, like, some kind of metal barrier that would at least provide some protection?
Mr. Sayer.
We, we talked a little bit about this at Public Safety, so I'll, I'll kind of paraphrase what I said there. But I think the, the comment I made was, I, I don't know what the purpose of the fence would be. I mean, you're not going to stop any cars from it. If anything, it might give people a false sense of security that either if they lean against it, it might accidentally fall into the street. I, my, my advice would be, I don't think there's enough space to put it in there. I think you're going to then potentially get those chairs and tables being pushed a little bit more towards the sidewalk, which is what we don't want. So I know from staff's perspective, I, I don't really see the reason for it, just from the standpoint of, I'm not sure what it, what it really accomplishes us with, without potentially having a false sense of security. And it could just be more of a, a liability for everybody. So I mean, from our standpoint, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it.
Alder Posey, I believe I saw your hand.
Thank you. So I guess, same thing where I'm concerned, but also want to support the business side. And I assume, one of my questions may have just been answered by Alder Cole, would, because two umbrellas have recently gone up on the upper tables. So I assume, been hearing about the smaller tables, that wouldn't be an option in the smaller tables. She wouldn't have anything on those, if anybody knows that. Is he head shaking? So I guess, assume no. Because that would be a concern of mine. I'm very concerned to actually, on the driver's side, of distracted drivers taking a look and, while looking at the people and making sure that they're not there, because you have the, not only the intersection, but the gas station right there in that driveway of people coming in and out of that spot. So I don't know. And I know that that area does quiet down probably after six, so I don't know if that would be something that we can even add into this, to have a, you can have the tables there, but not until traffic slows down at six or six-thirty, when things are calmer and you have a less opportunity to have both distracted drivers and then also the drivers coming around.
Further discussion? Alder Journey.
So I, I could go along with Alder Posey's suggestion to have the tables there after six or six-thirty in the evening. But I also would have the concern about liability to the city on top of it.
Alder Cole.
Um, with the, the motion specified insurance and indemnification, which would remove liability from the city if something would happen?
Alder Touche.
Thank you. Yeah, I just love discussion about liability and also this stuff, because we're, we're talking about people. Yeah, we, we want to be indemnified. We're planning for people to get hit. You know, I mean, a green light, how many people have sped up to make a green light? This is close to the intersection. I really, really think this is a bad idea. As much as I want to support the business, we really also have to remember that we are also, you know, the people in the city and the things that we allow, if we invite this risk, it's, it's just, it's bad. I mean, fine, we've, we've indemnified ourselves, and God forbid someone gets hit or hurt because we've allowed this. It's still on us. You know, we may not be legally responsible, but it's not something I want to live with. And I'm, and I'm not comfortable voting for this. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'm trying to find it in my packet. But Alder Riki, could you, if you can repeat the, the conditions that were part of this motion, just so everyone's on the same page?
Sure. The condition that the, that Toot and Kate's include the insurance and indemnification recommended by the city administrator and attorney, which they haven't seen yet, is my understanding. So if they can't agree to that, then this, the terrace seating would not occur. That's my understanding, anyway.
Correct.
So if they are not comfortable with this, if they are completely liable, if something terrible were to happen, then, then they'll just have the porch seating and not the terrace seating.
Were there other conditions, Alder Riki?
Yeah, the other two were, well, I guess, one more condition, that the chairs and tables don't overlap the sidewalk at all, but remain in the terrace. And then the extension through November fifteenth. I guess that's not really a condition, just a clarification on the date, through November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. And I'd be open to a compromise of the, the time being pushed back a little bit. I think, I think they open in the late afternoon, like four-ish, maybe? Three?
Three.
Three? And so maybe they could just have the porch seating from three to six, and then the terrace seating go out at, at six, as people mentioned. I, I could go along with that.
Was there a requirement for fencing? I'm sorry, like, I'm trying to drag them multiple screens.
No, there was not a requirement for fencing.
Got it. Alder Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I have a, a comment and one question. So I guess my comment is that, you know, the, the people who are attending Toot and Kate's are adults, and I think they assume a certain degree of risk, just as we all do when we're walking down the sidewalk. And so I, I'll just, that's just a statement, I guess. And if people don't feel comfortable, then they can choose not to sit there. And my question is, does anyone know what the operating hours slash days are for Toot and Kate's?
Alder Cole has your hand up.
I think they're generally like three to ten.
Three to midnight.
Three to midnight, okay.
Tuesday to Saturday.
Okay.
Thanks.
Alder Touche.
You know, people accepting risks, I'm sorry, but we're a very litigious society. Why do we have to have a sign on our lawnmower that says, "Don't put your hand where the blade is"? Or, "Don't put a piping hot cup of coffee between your legs"? I mean, as much as we like to think people have some sort of sense to them, Toot and Kate serves liquor, or serves alcohol, right? It's in their wine. They're, I, I would love to hear that people's judgment gets better when they're drinking. I, again, really a bad idea. So I, I know you're all are for it. I, I just, you know, I, when, and I really hope to goodness that nobody gets hurt, but, you know, we're all talking about liabilities. Why are we talking about it if we're not concerned about it? And I think we're trying to skirt safety to help a business. As much as I want to help the business, I think we need to be reasonable. So, thank you.
I'm, I'm going to call it myself, and then Alder Posey. I do, I guess this is kind of an ethical thing about it. But when, you know, without coming on this issue specifically, in general, if the city approves something, you should approve it because you think it's safe. If, if, like, some people are very careful at weighing the risks and doing the math and everything else. But if the city builds a street, people operate on the assumption that it's safe. You know, in the same way we have regulations around speed limits, you know, you can't go a hundred miles an hour down Main Street because it's not safe. You know, and I could tell you in my judgment, I can drive safe at a hundred miles an hour. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, you can't. Like, nobody should go that fast. And so I, I feel like, it, it, I, I agree with Alder Touche's point in the sense with, with legal liability, in the sense that, like, sure, the city's protected, but we want it, we want to be safe. And like, you know, kind of, without getting into the specific issue, if, if you think it's safe, I, I think then you should approve it, because we'll be helping a business. If you don't think it's safe, then I, then I think you should vote against it. But I, I do think we have a moral responsibility that if we approve something that, that we think it's safe. There's so many rules and regulations the city has, whether it's stormwater, everything else. It's, it's to prevent harm, to prevent damage. And I just, I just feel like, if, there's a lot of people who are not paying attention, you know, getting back to the COVID stuff, and if, you know, people, if, if the bars are open, people are going to assume it's safe, even though there's a lot of evidence that having a packed bar, like we've seen in other states, in other places in Wisconsin, you know, as far as spread goes, is not entirely safe. So I guess, that, I would just like to put that out there. But Alder Posey.
Thank you. So I think my first gut reaction, and when I first saw it, and I did do kind of the follow-up of going and looking and standing, which is where I felt that if I'm looking at it after hours, I know it does quiet down. But I know my initial response was that I didn't feel comfortable with this. I think the thing that I have wanted, as we've been talking through this this evening, is representation from Toot and Kate's, to be able to ask and answer questions, and to hear directly from them, and to hear that if they've taken on the liability, because if something does happen, I mean, they're taking on that to say, we're going to grow our business or be able to continue in business. But if something does happen, it could destroy their business. So I think that's part of what I'm kind of reaching out to try and hear, and I'm not hearing it tonight. So unfortunately, I think tonight, I would have to say, until those things get met and we get to hear from them, I would have to be on the side of no to this at this point. And it's gut-wrenching to say that in this climate, but it would have to be where I stand tonight.
Alder Kemp.
Why don't we, this is something that I mentioned at the beginning of this. Why don't we take the time to actually talk to them first? I mean, I would like to support this. I like the business. You know, you walk all up and down State Street in downtown Madison, and we, and even in, I think, in Middleton, there are some streetscaped businesses that have the exact same thing. And mind you, not necessarily in areas where people are slowing down, but where people are driving thirty-five miles an hour. So it's, this, this is a first for Verona. It's temporary. It's not something that would be there forever, but I, I think I would agree with Christine. I would like to find out if they're willing to accept. I mean, we don't have to do that. But if they're willing to accept the, the liability, I would be a little more comfortable voting for it. I understand some of the safety concerns, but there are, there are plenty of other communities that have streetscape seating, and there are city buses that fly up and down State Street. So I get it. I'm, I'm worried about safety, and that's, that's priority number one. But we, we're living in an extraordinary time. So what I would ask, what I suggest we do, at least for the short term, is table it, see if the owners are willing to come and speak to us about that part of it. And then we could have a diff, a vote on the issue.
If, if I could clarify, Alder Kemp, to, to speak on safety, or if they would accept liability?
Well, I, well, the liability issue.
I guess, because I guess I would say one thing, is that the way the motion is worded right now, they have to accept liability.
Right.
And so if they, if they don't accept liability, they can come back in two weeks and say, here's why. But I feel like, just my read of the room, is that if they weren't willing to accept liability, the council wouldn't approve it, because that would be an indication that they don't think it's safe.
Correct.
Okay. Alder Cole and Alder Posey.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if we table it, it's just pushing it back even farther to when they can, because they can't order tables, they, they aren't going to spend money on anything if it doesn't get passed. I mean, it's already going to bust into their budget to order more tables, to order fencing, to do this stuff. And the further we keep tabling it and pushing it back for them, the smaller window they have to even utilize this space if it would pass. And so like, you know, Mayor Diaz said, I mean, they can't, they can't go forward if they aren't going to accept the liability. I mean, I just, yeah, I just, I just hate pushing it back farther and farther.
Alder Posey.
So, yeah, and the things that I'd want to hear more of from the owners aren't necessarily around what we've already laid in there about the insurance. It's more of, have they spoken to their insurance? And is their insurance even willing to start looking at it? Or what feedback has their insurance provided them in order to cover something like this? What is the structure of the fencing? Because when we're talking about State Street, some of these places that have street-side eating, it's a structured fence, where it's essentially, you know, bolted to the sidewalk. So it's not temporary. It's not snow fencing. It's not just providing a visual barrier. It's something structural. And what also would be their response be if somebody is starting to block the sidewalk? How are they monitoring that? They're trying to do a lot of things. And I just wanted to hear, and continue to want to hear, directly from them. And I, if they were here tonight, or if me had been at the other meeting, some of these might have been answered. But it's one of those that it, how are they going to respond? How are they going to set this up? And I know we've heard some of that. But I would really like to hear direct from them and be able to ask them these questions so that I can understand a little better about their approach.
Further discussions or motion? Mr. Sayer, did you have something to add?
I, I just, I'll add two things. One, bolting these into the terrace, I don't, that's not going to work. We've got some utilities in there. We've got, it, it's not a, no, it's, it's, it's almost a non-starter. I know from a public works side, just because we've got a lot of infrastructure underneath there, and that's, terrace is very new. So to do it for a temporary thing, that's going to cost us some money. So I would strongly advise against that. Second thing is on the insurance. I mean, I, Second thing is in the insurance. I mean, this is a common requirement. So when you start venturing into areas in any municipality where you're in the right of way, this is not a, the insurance indemnification language, what's we're looking for is, quite honestly, we lifted it right from what Wanake recently approved. So I mean, it's a very similar requirement to what Wanake had. And then when I've worked elsewhere, it's been a very similar requirement when we have outdoor seating, regardless of a pandemic or not. It's a, it's a common requirement that the insurance companies have to do this and identify the city. So it's typically not a big problem. It's a matter of just contacting the insurance company and telling them, "This is what we're doing, and this is what we need." So it's not a new concept for the insurance companies. It's, like I said, it's quite, quite common. If I had to bet and I didn't reach out to Middleton, I bet you Middleton would have something similar as well, too. So, I guess from a staff level, if you're going to, if you're going to, and I understand Alder Posey's concerns, but I mean, if the concern is the insurance, you're, I think kind of what Alder Person Cole said, you're better off just approving it. And if they can't meet that requirement, having them come back. But if you want more details and questions, yeah, I don't see them in the audience tonight. You'd have to invite them back a week and a half from now.
I'll just call it myself real quick. Yeah, I think, to be honest, I think the insurance companies, now that I'm the biggest fan of insurance companies, but I think they're going to have a far better grasp of risk, you know, to safety because it impacts their bottom line than anyone in the room, and, you know, myself included. Because like, I guess I can see both arguments, that it could be safe, it might be risky. And I mean, if we put that in there and the insurance company says, "Yeah, we'll insure them", and they go forward with it, the insurance company is doing it because they think it's safe, and they're not going to have to actually pay out any claims. You know, and that's, they're going to have better data than we do. So I do think, you know, I mean, obviously, it's the decision of the council, but I think, you know, we could vote on it tonight with the conditions, and that would kind of leave it how it is. But we do have a motion on the body, so further discussion or amendments or motions? Alder Kemp, did you have your hand up? Oh, sorry. Further discussion? Alder Journey?
So just to clarify what you just said, would that require an amendment to the motion as it stands?
One of the, one of the conditions that Alder Riki read off was that they had to have the insurance for it.
Okay.
Alder Riki, and then Alder Ryan?
The only thing we talked about possibly adding as an additional condition would be the timeframe, starting at 6:00 PM or whatever, somebody would amend.
Alder Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to say, I think it's important that people are advocates for themselves. And I do, it's a little disappointing to hear that they were not at the Public Safety Committee meeting. I think that would have been an opportunity for them to advocate for themselves. And just a general comment that, you know, I think more participation in these sorts of discussions and participation at council is important, and so I would encourage that. However, I think in this case, I'm prepared to make a decision this evening on this topic.
Alder Cole?
Just in regards to them not being at public safety, I did email Megan, one of the owners, and she was confused. She was under the impression that the meeting was on Monday. And so she had already had something scheduled for this evening. So I believe she spoke with Adam ahead of time, but she thought it was on Monday.
We did send her the agenda last Friday, just to be clear on that, too.
Okay.
So everybody knows, we did send it out, and then she texted me yesterday and said what happened at the meeting, and I sent her the agenda again. So we sent it to her. So I mean, we gave her what we typically give people notice.
Okay.
Motion before the body? Any, Alder Journey?
So I would like to amend the motion to restrict the hours from 6:30 in the evening until closing.
Motion by Alder Journey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Riki? Anything to add to the motion to amend Alder Journey? Nothing to add? Okay, amendment to the motion before the body. Any discussion? Alder Touche?
Can I get the whole motion with the amendment read complete, so I understand what we're asking, what we're talking about?
Alder Riki?
Do you mean with all, what I read before plus this?
Yes.
All right, so the entire motion is to approve a temporary premises description amendment for Toot and Kate's LLC doing business at Toot and Kate's Wine Bar, 109 West Main Street, to include additional space on the front stoop area of the building and the sidewalk terrace with the conditions that they include the insurance and indemnification recommended by the city administrator and attorney, as well as ensure that the table and chairs remain in the terrace and not over the sidewalk at all, and that the hours for the additional seating begin at 6:00 PM. And that this-
6:30 PM, I believe, was the motion.
Sorry, 6:30 PM. And that this description, premises description amendment be valid through November 15th, 2020.
Thank you.
All right, we are, Alder Ryan?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to hear from Alder Journey what the rationale to the amendment is, please.
Alder Journey?
So the rationale is, is that it seems as if there's decreased traffic, that that's when the rush hour time is over. Whenever I drive through there, after 6:30, 7 o'clock, the traffic seems to be decreased significantly to include on the weekends.
Further discussion on the amendment? Alder Cole?
So is the 6:30 thing, like, for the weekends as well? Because there's-
No, no, that would be 6:30.
Even for like Saturday and-
But that would be 6:30 whenever their hours of operation are. I mean, if they're open from, let's say, if they're open, I think like from Tuesday through Saturday, I believe. Anyway, that would be 6:30 every day that they're open.
Because there just isn't like rush hour traffic on like Saturdays at all. So I would just see, they do get a lot of like afternoon people hanging out there, like Saturdays earlier than 6:30. And I'd be afraid they have to turn a bunch of people away.
Yes, I hear what you're saying. But no, that would include, as far as I'm concerned, the weekends.
Okay, Alder Kemp?
I just need clarification. Right now, as the amendment is presented, it is including, that 6:30 restriction is included on Saturdays and Sundays. So if we voted on this right now, they would not be able to have that seating until 6:30 on a Saturday or on a Sunday. And there is no rush hour traffic on those days. So if we wanted to make sure they could have some time in the afternoons on Saturdays and Sundays when there's no rush hour, that amendment would have to be changed to exclude Saturdays and Sundays.
Correct.
Okay. So, can I offer another amendment to the amendment, or does Charlotte have to do that?
You can amend to amend. I guess, yeah, you could, you could make a motion to the amendment, is what it would be.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to the amendment to, presented by Alder Journey, to allow Toot and Kate's to have the streetscape seating from the opening hours on Saturdays and Sundays through close.
Okay, so basically then it would be 6:30 PM or later on the weekdays, and then there would be restrictions on Saturday or Sunday. Okay. Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin. Anything to add, Alder Kemp? Discussion on Alder Kemp's motion to amend the amendment? Seeing no further discussion, we are voting only on the amendment to amend the amendment. And this would, would basically reduce the, change the restrictions from, of the amendment, instead of being all the days, to having them only on the weekdays. If the clerk would read the roll?
Alder Ryan?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Nope.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
No.
Alder Riki?
Aye.
Six to?
Motion passes. So now we are on the amendment to the motion, which has been amended to, say, 6:30 or later during the weekdays with no restrictions during operating hours Saturday or Sunday. We are now discussing this amendment. Any further discussion on this amendment? All right, we are now voting on the amendment only to the motion. If the clerk would read the roll?
Alder Riki?
Aye.
Alder Ryan?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
No.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
No.
Six to?
Six to, so that motion passes, and we are now on, or that amendment passes. So now we are back to the original motion, which would alter the, would be a temporary premise alteration with the conditions specified, plus the additional condition that it would be 6:30 PM or later on weekdays. Discussion on the main motion? Seeing no further discussion, if the clerk would read the roll on the main motion?
Alder Posey?
No.
Alder Riki?
Aye.
Alder Ryan?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
No.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Six to?
And the motion passes six to two. Mr. Sayer, if I, if I could, will you reach out to the applicant tomorrow and let them know the situation?
Yes, Ms. Clark will be reaching out to them tomorrow.
Oh, of course, that's under the clerk. Thank you. All right, where were we in the agenda? With that, we will move on to item 9B2. Alder Riki?
This item will be tabled. So do I need to make a motion to table it?
No, if there is no recommendation coming out of Public Safety and Welfare, perhaps you could give us some background on the situation, and then we can just move on to the next item.
Sure, this ordinance amending number 20-967 regarding parking restrictions has been postponed until our next Public Safety and Welfare Committee meeting time because there's a desire to research and potentially add some distance to the no-street parking on Nine Mountain Road.
All right, good to do further research. Any discussion from the council? Seeing no discussion on this item, anything further from Public Safety?
That is all.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to 9C, which is Plan Commission. Alder Cole?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. So the first item is making a motion to approve Resolution Number R-20-031, approving a conditional use permit to allow an indoor commercial entertainment land use at 1155 Clarity Street.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second? Second by Alder Ryan, I think. Alder Cole?
The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on August 3rd, 2020, and discussed the project. Comments from the Plan Commission included discussion if this land, if this is the last vacant tenant space for the building, and why this land use is required to go before the Plan Commission and Common Council for a conditional use permit. The Plan Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of the CUP.
You've heard the explanation. Any discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number R-20-031, approving a conditional use permit to allow an indoor commercial entertainment land use at 1155 Clarity Street? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Alder Cole?
All right, next item is 9C2. I'm just looking at the agenda versus the actual administrator's report. Okay, making a motion to approve the concept.
I believe we're just reviewing the concept plan.
Okay, that's what I thought. Like, I didn't think it was a-
Yeah, if I'm remembering right, I believe they were flipped in the-
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Yeah, this is just discussion then regarding the concept plan review for a planned unit development located north of 233 Wildcat Way. The applicant is proposing a planned unit development, concept plan, that would allow for the construction of two commercial buildings with drive-throughs that would contain a total of approximately 8,180 square feet of commercial space. The Plan Commission discussed the project on August 3rd, 2020. Comments from the Plan Commission included shifting the eastern building towards the east to move the diagonal, parking to the center of the site to allow pedestrians to walk to their car without walking through the drive-through. Bicycle parking is needed. Will the proposed retaining wall cover up a portion of the building, hiding any architectural features, ensuring there is enough space for queuing distances for the drive-through to not back into the exit of the other drive-through, and landscaping of the drive-through near West End Circle could contain hemlock and eastern white pine? The council is encouraged to provide feedback and recommendations to the applicant on the concept. No formal motion is required, as this is just a conceptual review of the project.
Thank you for that explanation. I'm going to call it myself first of all, other people think of their feedback. Yeah, I'm just going to repeat some of the stuff I said at the Plan Commission. I'm not normally the biggest fan of drive-throughs, however, in the age of COVID, it's kind of hard to be against them because I totally get it, people don't want to get out of their cars, you know, and go into a private business, so I totally understand the need for that. I definitely think there should be a focus on making it friendly to people who walk or bike. There definitely needs to be bike parking. And I would definitely appreciate landscaping as the kind of natural barrier, and just considering the area it's near. It's near some natural areas, so I think, you know, plenty of native evergreen species, as noted, like white pine and Canadian hemlock would be good, too. But it is, excuse me, before the council, any feedback on this concept plan? Alder Ryan?
Just a quick question, do we know what the businesses are that are going there?
Mr. Sayer, do you have some inside info for us?
I believe, off the top my head, I believe the one, hold on one second. I believe the one in the orange color, that's a bank type use. And then this one, I'm not familiar with what exactly what it is. I could guess, which would be inappropriate for you to guess, but, but no, this one definitely, the orange would be a bank financial type use.
Further questions or comments from the city council? Seeing no further discussion, I don't think. Mr. Sayer, was there any questions that the city council should be examining, or any comments or specific feedback on this one?
No, we just wanted to hear, it obviously has to go to the council, but the drive-through obviously is a key component on this one. If there was any big red flags or anybody who wanted to hear it, no.
All right, I guess, in addition to any other comments you might have, if anyone is opposed to the drive-through, now would be the time to mention it. Alder Riki?
I guess I'm just wanting clarification, is the drive-through because of COVID-19? And originally, like, if there were no pandemic, there wouldn't be a need for a drive-through?
I don't believe that's the case. I don't believe that's the case. I think both for, for the banking and the mystery building or mystery business, I think they would want a drive-through anyway. I guess when, when I made my comment, I just, in general, I'm not the biggest fan of drive-throughs. However, it's harder for me now to, to be against them. If that makes sense. If that answers the question, I should say. Um, Alder Ryan.
So just to clarify, this is in proximity to the high school, correct?
Yeah, it's a kind of a bit east of the gas station, the new gas station. And Mr. Sayer will bring it up.
So it's on, it's in, in right before you. So it'd be just north of the new QuickTrip and just east of the Market Five Development. The city does own this outlot, which is just north of the property, which is the old Half Mile Road. It's a city-owned outlot that we acquired from DOT a few years ago. We've got a significant number of utilities in that location. This property also is in the downtown overlay as well. That's one of the things as well with the drive-through is it's part of the overlay, but yeah, that's where it's located.
Alder Ryan.
So I just got to make a comment without knowing what the mystery business is. But I'll, I'll say that many fast food outlets have drive-throughs. And just a personal opinion is that it feels predatory and gross to have something in such proximity to high school students.
Further feedback from the council? Alder Posey.
So, and this might be a good question. Adam, you might be able to answer this. Are there any concerns about the grading of this? Because I know that drops down. I, that's why I've spent so much time looking at this because I'm trying to picture fitting two more buildings and spaces right next to where the QuickTrip just built up.
Yeah, so they, they would, they would, they would match the grade, obviously, with the QuickTrip. It's a shared access point.
Right.
So they would take, you know, obviously use the same access that QuickTrip is using. The red line here though on the screen, that's a, that's a retaining wall. We haven't gotten the exact details on that, but that's probably going to vary in the height because it does slope considerably as you go to the east.
Yeah.
So they would have to do a significant amount of grading on the property, but you'd have a, you probably have a sizable retaining wall there, just the handle that grade to bring it up to where it needs to be. It's, 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 it's a tougher, challenging property as a whole just because it slopes off very quickly to the east.
I think that's why I didn't, I was surprised that they were going to put this in that spot with two buildings and parking lot. It just doesn't seem like it even fits there. My other question was, isn't this that area that we were talking about for the signage for the high school, the big lit sign that we've been? Is that the message board sign, whatever, however that's referred to? Sorry, I can't remember how we've referred to that.
Mr. Sayer?
Yeah, correct. It'd be up in the corner here. It'd be up in the, the proposed sign that we've talked about before would be about where my cursor is. Hopefully you can see that, but it'd be up north of this property.
Okay. So there's no impact of that, or is that something that they would have to, the developers would have to work out with the high school?
It's, it's a different piece of property. So there'd be no one that would.
Thank you.
Further feedback on this concept plan? Seeing no further discussion, we will move on to nine C three. Alder Cole.
Thank you. All right, next up is discussion regarding a planned unit development concept plan review for a one-story one thousand two hundred and eighty square foot addition to the existing commercial building located at five seventeen Half Mile Road. The applicant is proposing a planned unit development concept plan that would allow for construction of sixteen hundred square foot addition. The upper one says twelve eighty.
Mr. Sayer?
They modified it actually between the Plan Commission meeting and the council meeting. So it got a little bit bigger between the Plan Commission meeting and.
Okay, so sixteen hundred square feet is the correct.
Correct.
Okay, for sixteen hundred square foot addition to the existing commercial building located at five seventeen Half Mile Road. The Plan Commission discussed the project on August third, two thousand and twenty. Comments from the Plan Commission included support for the business and glad to see the business is expanding, recommending talking to neighbors regarding the reduction of the rear setback and will the zoning ordinance reduce the rear setback to what is being requested? The council is encouraged to provide feedback and recommendations to the applicant on this concept. No formal motion is required as this is the conceptual review of the project.
Thank you for that explanation. Mr. Sayer, could you pull it up on the map real quick, just so we all know what we're talking about? I think it's easier to visualize.
So on the yellow is the existing property and the proposed addition is on the lower right there. The addition would go off the southern part of the property. They'd also expand the parking lot as well as part of this. And the building would, would, would match kind of what's out there today.
I'll call on myself before opening it up to other comments. I think, yeah, I think it's great to see the business expanding and, and, and you know, you love to see it. And I think, I think the proposal looks nice. And, and to me, I think we should, we should, we should definitely approve something like this. But anyways, other feedback on the plan? Alder Posey, then Alder Ricky.
Yeah, I would also fully support the plan. I also, I, I'm normally not a proponent of cutting those setbacks smaller, but knowing that it's industrial behind it, that's already buildings, that it's not residential, that plays a big role in being okay with adding that. And it's exciting to see the bike shop grow.
Alder Ricky.
Yeah, I've always thought this was a great local business, so I'm excited to support them in expanding.
Any additional feedback on the plan? Seeing no further hands. Mr. Sayer, did we, did we cover all the talking points?
Yep, we're good.
Great. With that, we will move on to nine C four. Alder Cole.
Thank you. Next up is a discussion regarding a planned unit development concept plan review for a hundred and eighteen units senior housing comprised of sixty units of assisted living and fifty-eight units of assisted slash memory care located adjacent to eleven hundred Wayland Road. The applicant is proposing a planned unit development concept plan that would allow for the construction of a hundred and eighteen units senior housing comprised of sixty units, assisted living and fifty-eight units of assisted memory care located adjacent to eleven hundred Wayland Road. This development would require annexation, urban service area amendment, zoning map amendment, development agreements, and a plan development. Plan Commission discussed the project on August third, two thousand and twenty. Comments from the Plan Commission included underground parking making sense, but would entertain less parking if it is different from previously approved facilities in the city. Parkland dedication should be provided for the residents, mixed feelings about converting non-residential land to residential land, and confirmation that the neighborhood plan did not have a lot of thought given towards this area of the city north of Wayland Road. The council is requested to provide feedback and recommendations to the applicant on the concept as well as if this land used to be supported on this property. No formal motion is required as this is the conceptual review of the project, but the applicant is trying to determine if the project can move forward.
Thank you for that explanation. Same, same thing with this one. Mr. Sayer, if you can put it up so then everyone watching can see it as well. And before I open up for questions, I would, you know, as the applicant requested, if, if, you know, you're dead set against this or you don't think this is a good use of the land now would be the time to say so. If you think it's a good use of the land, once again, now would be the time to say so. With that, any feedback on the concept plan? Alder Cronin.
So my biggest issue is that this is not a use that was previously specified for this land. And if we're going to make these designations of how we want to see areas of the city used, then we should respect that because otherwise, what's the point of having these areas designated for specific purposes? My second issue is that I don't think it's a good idea to put people who are already isolated in our society in an area of the city where they would be even more isolated. I mean, we do anticipate that there will be more developments in that area of town, but right now there isn't a whole lot for anyone to do. There's no green space for people to walk. I just, I don't think it's a good use of that land.
Alder Cole.
I'd also like to tag onto what Alder Cronin said is that if other, you know, industrial air, you know, operations go up around that because that's what that's zoned for, that just to echo Alder Cronin said, it would be more isolating because, you know, these people are going to not even be in a residential area at this point and it's going to be an industrial type area. And I, yeah, I'm not really convinced that the, that's a proper land use for, for that right now.
Alder Touche.
Thank you. Weirdly, I've been just recently looking for such a place for an immediate family member, and I can agree that availability, especially in this area, is exceptionally low and also very expensive, which I can probably drives why this is being requested. You know, my experience with these facilities is they tend to need a lot of space because they're trying to accomplish many levels of support from independent all the way up to kind of full-on care, and they do need a lot of room for that. They employ professionals, which I really like having in Verona. So not only are we having kind of residents, but we're having professionals work here, you know, skilled nursing, administrative staff and so on. So I don't think we're going to find an ideal location that has this kind of space in an area that is like more urban, that has like things to walk to, things to do. I can also just say from experience that a lot of residents of these places, this, this tends to be where they are, right? When they leave, they're not very much leaving on their own as much as they are going with friends and family members. So, you know, even the family members I know that, that live in these facilities, a walk around a block is good for them, and that's kind of the extent of it. I will say I like courtyards, kind of private courtyards for these facilities. So if I were to give any immediate feedback, it would be if, if there's a way to kind of carve off a more private area for the residents to enjoy the outside without necessarily being in a parking lot or in, you know, even in, to the point that was brought up, an industrial area, right? I, I just, again, personal experience, I think there's a lot of value in that. So, you know, my feedback on that site plan is really just, is there a way to carve off a, a private, green sitting courtyard, some social area where various levels of residents can enjoy each other's company and also just feel safe. The location, yeah, I agree, is not ideal, but it's definitely needed. And if, if, if the council doesn't feel this is the right location, I, I really want to press city staff to find a good spot for this because the needs are there. You know, the, the, there's continued aging population that, that there is a need for this and I, I'm in support of, of such a facility completely. And admittedly, this isn't an ideal location, but you know, then, then we need to find one because this is a great, these are great neighbors to have, you know, whether it's, who they employ or, you know, what they do for the community. Thank you.
Alder Ryan.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to echo what everyone said. I think that we understand what the, the pros and cons are. I think that skilled nursing or H, H care services are very much needed, and I would be more than happy to have them in our city. And I think if we could bring them closer to home, you know, closer to the center of things, that would be better. I think that's all I have to say, thanks.
Alder Journey, then Alder Posey.
So I know, I think there are neighborhoods that are being planned behind that area. And I started to think about that this could be a good transitional, transitional project in the future. But then I would also like to see the Noel Manor model for parking and green space put into place. I was a little concerned when I listened to the planning committee that parking might, might be too restricted. And then I started to think about if there are, are groups of family members that want to come in support of any of the residents, if that parking would be restricted to them. So anyway, those are my thoughts.
Alder Posey.
In addition to everything that's already been said, I would also, my concern is with location. I think the facility concept and having one here in Verona would be great. But I am concerned with the location and taking into account the cost for what the utility improvements and road improvements necessary to get out to that location. Industrial is a little bit different than trying to support a full residential facility with the number of residences one would have. So that's something that I would encourage us to help them to locate a better location that is within our plans already, or at least close enough that it wouldn't have, what I assume would probably be pretty significant expense for us to get that type of utilities out there.
Further feedback on the topic? Mr. Sayer? Actually, I'm sorry. I, I would like to request that the other alders who haven't spoke, if they, if they, if they could offer, whether you're, you're either diametrically opposed or diametrically in favor, just so we can give the outcome clarity. Alder Kim.
I generally fall somewhere in between Alder Cronin and Alder Touche. I think that certainly there is a need for this type of facility. We have an older population, a baby boom population that's starting to work their way into sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five and above. And there's limited space. I also can see what Alder Cronin has said with respect to how we have things zoned for a reason within the city limits. Right now, I think, you know, they're looking for feedback from us. Mine would be, perhaps we can go back and see if we can find a better location at, at this time. I don't know if, if they're willing to do that with us, but I think that's something we should consider.
I think we can definitely, I think staff has heard that feedback, and I think they could definitely talk with the applicant. I don't, you know, no idea if that's actually a possibility or not. Alder Touche.
Yeah, I, I like how Chad finished that with suggesting they go to, to city staff. I would really like to hear from staff if a suitable site can be found for them. You, be, you know, I, I agree that that's kind of one of the bigger challenges with the location, but yeah, I mean, if, if this is like the best thing come up with and city staff tends to agree for the reasons that they give, I, I'd like to hear that, if that's true or not. So, and then kind of take this into reconsideration because yeah, the need is huge. So, thank you.
Alder Ricky.
I didn't speak earlier because I'm, I'm kind of on the fence. It makes me sad that we basically house our older generations in these sorts of facilities, but that's how our society is. And so I, I don't know the best answer. I wish we could all just be, you know, have a way to engage the older populations in, in the community more in the center of things, you know, throughout their whole lives. So, yeah, just, I, I agree with what was said by many of the other alders as far as the location not being ideal. And, you know, I just wish there was some other way to take care of our older generations to begin with. So that's why I'm sort of at a loss for a better suggestion. take care of our older generations to begin with. So that's why I'm sort of at a loss for a better suggestion.
Uh Alder Ryan.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to piggyback off Alder Ricky's statements and just make a comment, which is that I this meeting tonight is interesting. I'm gonna go out on a limb and assume that the business that we talked about previously adjacent to the high school is like a fast food place. Um, which again seems to me predatory. I think it's interesting that we sort of, you know, are in in one vein leeching off of um young naive kids. Meanwhile, we wanna sort of you know, relegate our aged population um to the outskirts of town. And so I think I just want to make the comment that I think it's uh tremendous that this body, we have the ability to make these decisions on behalf of our community and it's very um, you know, it honored position to be in and um so I think we should take those things into consideration. We make our decisions and make the best ones uh on behalf of our people and if we if we feel like there's um errors in our society or in things that we can do better, now is the time, you know, we have the opportunity to change those things. So let's let's do that.
This is a question I have for Mr. Sayer. Um, I'm looking at the uh uh item and it has sixty units of assisted living and fifty-eight units of assisted memory care. Uh, my understanding that would be for for these folks, I know you're not an expert, but the people here wouldn't necessarily be able to live on their own, is that?
That's my understanding, yeah. I'm not, I'm not an expert and I'm sure the applicant could tell, yes, that better than me, but my understanding is no, it it wouldn't be independent. It'd be a care facility.
Okay.
And I and I I can kind of address kind of the location. I mean, this isn't the first site we actually looked at with them. Uh, we looked at a site that was further east of here actually and we had concerns about serving it. We have concerns about Wayland Road and Wayland Road is in pretty poor shape if you've driven on that. Um, and then just general concerns about leapfrog development of, is that best practice, but good policy or not? Right now, this is about a sixteen seventeen acre site total, what they're acquiring. This facility would be on eight point six acres. You're gonna be hard pressed to find that kind of land in the city. I mean, there's there's and I've been kind of texting here Catherine because she's listening to the meeting as well, just what ideas she had. We we've turned over a lot of different ideas in the past for something like this and for a variety of reasons, it didn't work for them or it didn't work for us. But to find a piece of property that sizable, that is available potentially in the shorter term, you're you're definitely looking north into that north neighborhood vicinity. Beyond that, we we don't have anything of this size. I mean, it's it's been taken up already. It's been purchased, developed already. Um, it's very difficult to accommodate this. I mean, we we get a lot of requests for different types of uses that require a lot of land and we just, in some cases, we just don't have that land that's readily available. So, uh, there's there's not going to be many other spots to put this. We've we've tried, we've looked at one in detail to the east of here and it didn't, it didn't work out and staff quite honestly, wasn't overly supportive of that. We had concerns about it. And this was kind of what we thought was a a compromise you want to look at. And we, you know, from a staff level standpoint, we see this as a pretty decent location. This this was planned as a business park, as a non-residential land use. Um, the bigger policy question is you start pushing north of Wayland Road, the nearest uh interchanges to the south of here, I made this comment, the plant commission, but you're you're looking at the interchange down at um County Highway PB, um, the the diamond or the interchange up at Verona Avenue, it's not a traditional interchange, it's only got two legs to it. The one at PB has four legs to it. So if there was, if there was a business park here, all that truck traffic is going to be going south. Um, so it's just something to keep in mind that it it may not be long-term ideally ideal for this use. Our goal is to look at this area as part of that east neighborhood plan and try to get a better gauge of this area because the non-residential land use goes all the way up to Grandview Road. That's a bigger question, which we're gonna have to tackle regardless, but um to find land for this elsewhere is gonna be tough. You're you're looking north.
Uh, Mr. Sayer, can we bring one of the applicants on uh to maybe just describe the facility a little bit? I see they both have their hands up.
Yeah, I guess Mike or Tom. Tom I know operates, he spoke at the plant commission, but Mike was the applicant who spoke tonight in public comments.
Um, I guess if Mike's the person who spoke, then let's let's bring him up to maybe uh if you could describe uh the facility, so people have a clear uh idea of, you know, what what kind of what kind, well, what kind of facility it is and some of the needs of the the people at the facility.
It, as far as the residents and the needs of the residents are concerned, I would prefer to to let Tom Ostrom discuss those things. Um, in terms of just the overall development and and the history of our attempts to find a location uh that is suitable within Verona. Um, this is actually the third site that we've had under contract. Um, the, and and we've been moving west each time along Wayland Road, basically. Um, we understand that this is an annexation that the city needs to grow and we believe that this is a perfect location because it is, you're opening the door to the city from this side. And it, the use that we have for this property is much more similar to a hotel use than it is to an apartment building. Um, the the rooms that are uh the suites that we have are for uh as- assisted living and memory care uh residents. They're basically hotel suites. It's a, it's a bedroom and a bathroom. With a maybe a small little uh area for a coffee maker or something like that. But there is no uh, there's no kitchen facilities, there they really don't resemble apartments. Now, the RCAC portion of it does have apartments. They have what we'll call mini kitchens. Um, they're, they are there in our experience mostly because people want to have them, that that they want, they don't use them. We provide meals for all of the residents in the building for, whether they're in RCAC or in assisted or in memory care. We, meals are part of their program. Um, housekeeping is part of their program. The people in the RCACs are able to get around uh better, but they typically do not have cars. They typically do not drive. They um I I don't know how else to 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 describe how this type of resident comports themselves within the facility. But the, what we're doing now is uh, we're actually redesigning certain aspects of our facilities because we need to accommodate family member visits in COVID. Um, right now, you cannot even under the, under the uh health guidelines, you can't bring uh family members into these buildings. So we're trying to design in outside access where somebody can meet with their loved ones in an outdoor uh courtyard, so to speak, or in a single room that is directly accessible from the outside and is controlled as far as access is concerned from the inside.
So if if I could, that that that's kind of why you need that amount of space.
Yeah, and and that's exactly it. And and we, not only is underground parking not necessary, it's not indicated. Um, we provide transportation for the people in these buildings. We have buses and vans. We um, we bring in medical services. We we accommodate everything to to make it as self-contained as possible. People do leave, they leave with family members all the time. People do, except with COVID. But people uh obviously go out with family members and and family members come to visit. We we want to have adequate parking so that on the days when visitation is high, uh Mother's Day, Easter, those type of holidays, uh, we want to be able to accommodate it, especially in a situation where, as here, it's a little bit more remote. And um, w- w- we would not necessarily have shuttle parking from another location. So, that's the the idea behind the layout here. In 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 my history, and I've done zoning in in a bunch of uh localities, this type of use is generally considered to be institutional. And as an institutional use, it is typically acceptable on a planned unit development, special use, conditional use, however the municipality terms it. Within multiple zoning districts, we, we're not looking to change this into a residential zoning district or to have it brought in as a residential zoning district. O and R uh office and research, uh even light industrial, i- if it can be brought in as a as a conditional use within that type of district, we're perfectly happy to do that. Um, but we we need to know, we need to know, we have to have direction. Um, we can't, we can't perform all of the physical due diligence that we need to do to keep our contract with our land seller uh uh unless we have some idea that this is something that can be supported within the city. We're happy to work with you. We're happy to to do whatever we can to make this a state-of-the-art uh facility to bring to Verona. And we know, we've done market research, we know that there's a demand here. Um, so it, but the problem is if you go, because we also develop these in multiple locations, we know the 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 metrics, we know the money, how, what works and what doesn't. And if, if you load this thing up too far, it doesn't work, no matter where. And so, if we, we have plenty of room here for for surface parking, we'll do surface parking. We can work with you as far as the park donation is concerned. We can work with you as far as uh right-of-way donation dedication is concerned. We're happy to do all of those things, but I'm not hearing, at least at this point, a confidence building uh comments that 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 we should bother to, I don't, I don't know how else to put it. Um, I I would welcome, I would, you know, uh to have our other team members talk about the uh details of the building, the construction, the units, those types of things and and they're here and they're able to to address those issues. But I don't think that we're there yet. I I don't think that, I think you guys understand what a uh an assisted living building is. Most people have a pretty good uh idea of what they are and how they function, et cetera. Um, we would like to build you, like I said, a nice and fairly large state-of-the-art facility. If you can, you can find uh the rationale to support it.
Thank you um for that clarification. Uh, as long as we have you up, any questions for the applicant? Uh Alder Posey.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing all of that, Mike. Um, my quick question had to do with, you mentioned your timeframe with the seller. Because I know that at least for my questions, it's not necessarily a quick and easy answer as far as what costs coming into play and kind of measuring that with projects we've already got on the books. Um, so what is your timeframe with the seller to kind of keep everything moving?
We're we don't have a specific timeframe with them yet because we, as an annexation, we weren't sure how things would proceed with the city. We have a fairly cooperative seller. This property was not listed for sale. We assembled the, w- w- we sought out the property from the land seller. The land seller understands that the process has to be uh gone through and they also understand that it could fall through. Um, so we have several months, but if we don't get on track, we can't get the the due diligence done. For example, you can't do a wetlands uh delineation after November. So if we don't get far enough along in our comfort level to proceed with the physical due diligence, we're, you know, we'll run out of time and run into an, you know, having to push into next year. Whether the sellers will go along with that, I I'm not a hundred percent sure. But I I'm I'm not trying to indicate that, you know, we're under a gun, but we're under a gun. We, we, we do, we, you know, it's a business transaction and we have to, we have to make our decisions, you know, accordingly. So it's within, within the next few uh weeks, month, we'd like to have a good idea of where we're going. And I, uh, I I'm here to answer any questions, uh, you know, and and we have our architect, we have our um civil engineers here, uh, who can address any of the other type of issues that you have. But let, obviously, the elephant in the room is the, is the use. So.
Thank you. Uh, other questions for the applicant? Uh Alder Ryan.
Mr. Mayor, I just, my question is, is it a place that you would be happy to be?
Yeah, uh, well, if the applicant would like to.
My, personally? Uh, i- i- are you saying would I personally like to live in this facility? Is that the question? I think so.
In the facility, in the location, et cetera?
If I, if I require that, I I would hope I don't. We all do, but if I do, yes, absolutely. Yes, without question.
Um, other uh questions for the applicant? Thank you uh for for clarifying. I think, I think it helped me. I guess we'll move back to general discussion. Um, did the applicant's clarification change anything for anyone? Or if we can provide more clarity to the applicant, I think that would be that would, I think they would appreciate that. Uh Alder Ricky.
I guess I'm just wondering if there's any way to reduce the above-ground parking. Um, I don't know if shared parking might be an option. I don't know who it would be shared with, but um, just asking you to give some thought to that. It seems like a lot of parking um, impervious surface. Um, and just, I always worry about storm, stormwater management and water runoff and all of that.
Uh Alder Cole.
I guess I'm still just thinking about the land use and the proposed plan for that area, neighborhood in general. I mean, if we're going to I mean, is this gonna change like the landscape of what was planned for that area? Um, are we going to allow this for other parts of that which we had originally designated as, you know, bringing in, you know, businesses and tax revenue and whatnot? I guess that's just, I, maybe it's a question more for um, Mr. Sayer, that if you think that will change the landscape of what we're, what we want for that area eventually in the future.
Yes, I think generally, I think that one of the comments, even at Plan Commission from uh Commissioner Lidle, I mean, Pat's been on the Plan Commission for a while and before that, he was on the Comprehensive Plan Committee. He made a comment that there really wasn't much thought given to lands kind of north of Wayland Road. The focus was Liberty Business Park and the Technology Park. But yeah, I I think it would change. I think it's more of a philosophy type question as well of you've got Wayland Road, you've got Grandview Road, both those roads don't go anywhere right now going east. You know, I think as we get into that neighborhood plan at some point, hopefully, hopefully next year, uh, we hope to get better clarity of kind of how this would 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 look, but it would impact, I would say, the lands definitely kind of as you go north, but I think generally already they're gonna be impacted because I don't know if you want a business park fronting on Grandview Road. I mean, that's a road that feeds in the the old Highway PB and then you're gonna put a lot of traffic getting it down that road and it just, it's more of a may not be best planning on that, but uh, yeah, it would change it. I don't, I don't see how it wouldn't.
Alder Cole.
So do we need to like re configure or relook at what we want to do with that area? Because if, if we're talking about not having it be like more heavily like industrial or business laden, then I mean, that would kind of change things a little bit, I think, for me and in general. I don't, I mean, I I don't know. I don't, I don't know what the solution is. I'm just, like I said, I'm concerned. I don't, I mean, I don't know, I don't, I don't know what the solution is, I'm just, like I said, I'm concerned about putting, you know, this type of facility in like, what would be more of like an industrial or, you know, business park type area, but if you're saying that you're not sure that that's what that should be used for anyways, then are we going to make it more residential?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good point, I just, I think that's, that's, as Mr. Sayer said, a philosophical question for the council, and if people are like, yeah, we should do it, then we should do it, and if people are like, no, I don't, I don't want that, then you know, then we shouldn't. Alder Ryan.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, so, a couple of comments, I've worked in social services for like 25 years, I've worked in memory care units and aged care facilities, and I get it, and I understand. One, I understand the current need, but I also understand very, very well what goes on. And the pros and the cons, and there's a lot of cons. Again, I think, I I think this, you know, body, folks like us have got a real opportunity, and I think one of the biggest, one of the most powerful tools we have in our toolkit is is no, right, like saying no to things, and I think if we here's what I'm thinking about, is that people that I love and care about, where would I want them? I ain't getting any younger, none of you are getting any younger. Where do you want to be? And if we are ever, and this, this is just way broader than just this topic, but if we're ever going to do anything different, now is the time to do it. We are on this planet precisely once, whatever the hell we're going to do, now's the time to do it. And if we are going to make change, we need to stand up and do that. And so, you know, I I think, I know that there's different models, there's different business models of doing things. If enough people stand up and say no to something, people have to rethink their business model, right, like, what we're doing here is is cookie cutter sort of stuff, right? We replicate it in places all around the place, because we we know it works, we know it's a revenue generator, and it makes ends meet. And it meets indeed, and that's great, but at a certain point, people need to be able to say, no, not in our town. Figure it out, do something different, and that societal change, you know, to to Alder Ricky's point. It's very sad. The way that we have chosen to do things in this country, but we're the ones in charge right now, and if we're going to do something different, now's the time to do it, so my general view is that if I were to vote on this today, it would be a no. It would be a no, so good for that.
Other comments or yeah, other, other journey?
So I'm going to go back to my original gut when I first started reading about this, and still and since it's still an undefined area that needs to have further planning input and thought. I don't think that this is necessarily the right place and the right time for that type of facility.
Other thoughts from the council? Alder Touche.
You know, from my side, I see the need, I I would love to be able to have someone in need of higher level care that I can't deliver on my own in my home and in a better situation. I'm definitely very interested in, and if there's better solutions, yes, bring them, invite them, this is so far the best solution I've seen in the area. The needs don't go away, we can all hope and dream for something better, but until someone's actually stepping up and doing it, this is what we got. You know, it's you know, yes, yeah, we can say no to this, and that doesn't stop the need from going away, and the need's going to keep growing, and and it's going to continue to be more difficult, so. Yeah, you got a great idea, bring it, please, and if it's viable, but if it's not viable, or if it hasn't been proven to work, these facilities work, and and I'm no expert, that's for sure, I just know the need side. I would like to see even more in something bigger than this, that 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 goes from independent senior living all the way up to full memory care, full on, you know, I hate to use the term nursing home, but you know, I've I've seen my aging parents go from very independent living to their health dwindling, and thank goodness, and I'm knocking on wood that I haven't had to deal with Alzheimer's, but I know families whose parents are dealing with it, and it's very difficult for them, and it's beyond their ability to care for them, and we need skilled facilities. And yeah, you know, I'd love it if I could just retire and take care of my aging parents, but it's, I'm not at that point, I'm trying to get my kids through college at this point, and it's going to be a while, so as much as we can live some sort of pipe dream and shoot for something that's better, unless someone's knocking down our door to do it, I think we got to support what's available. Thank you, I'm in full support of this, by the way.
Okay, other comments on the proposal itself, try, sorry, I'm trying to limit it maybe away from philosophical stuff, although I do want everyone to have their say, and more just on the the concept plan if we could. Any other thoughts on the 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 comment plan or the concept plan, thank you, pardon? Mr. Sayer, did everything get, kind of get covered?
Yes.
Okay. All right, with that, we will move on, keep things moving to nine C five, Alder Cole.
Oh, me, okay. Number five, this is discussion regarding a planned unit development, concept plan review for a two-story 34,000 square foot multi-phase private school located at 301 North Main Street. The applicant is proposing a planned unit development concept plan that would allow for the construction of a two-story 34,000 square foot multi-phase private school located at 301 North Main. Plan Commission discussed the project on August 3, 2020. Comments from the Plan Commission included what parking is used for the current school site versus this new school site. Discussions regarding traffic impact analysis. Right of way should be dedicated for road improvements to North Main Street as part of this project. Access points should be shared between the church and private school and align with the school access point. Will there be a cafeteria? Brief discussion regarding drainage, several emails of support for the project were received. Other neighborhood concerns need to be reviewed and more information is needed. The council is encouraged to provide feedback and recommendations to the applicant on the concept, as well as a determination of support for an access point location. No formal motion is required, as this is the conceptual review of the project.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Sayer, can you throw the map up real quick on this one as well?
Sure, hold on a second, the AC shuts off at City Hall at this time, and it starts to get warm. Sure, so the the property question is highlighted in yellow, the screen before you, the kind of the area we're discussing is this vacant field to the north of the existing church. It's a three-phase project, we've got the kind of the phases through here, we've got the kind of the new building here in phase one, a future building in phase two, and then a potential gym here in phase three, as the applicant kind of explained in the kind of comments, access would come from the Silent Street right away area. And then we also have the floor plans as well, which shows the classrooms, the breakout area, which the breakout area would be used. Also for the cafeteria type functions as well, that was an item that was discussed at the Plan Commission.
Thank you. Before we open it up, I'm wondering if staff, because it's been talked about, potentially about the school sharing parking or a driveway with the church to the south, and I'm wondering if city staff could talk about, just give an overview of of how the city handles, you know, shared parking lot or other shared agreements between different property owners.
Sure, I've I've got Jess Billmeyer here tonight, Jess is the city's traffic engineer. So I'll kind of turn over to Jess, Jess had just a very short, I think, Mary D, as we had talked about that question before the meeting, but Jess has a very short PowerPoint, two slides here to kind of walk through, so Jess, I'll up put the presentation up. And I'll turn over to you.
Sounds good. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Cool, thank you, thank you for having me on, I'm glad to talk to you again. See, Adam gave me the heads up that you are interested in why we, why we propose shared access and shared parking type facilities. It's a big area of study in transportation, it's called access management, they've been doing research on it for forever. And there's essentially two main reasons that we, that we try to limit access on on arterial streets. One is to reduce crashes, and the second is to increase the roads throughput. So on the crash front, each driveway we put on the street is another conflict point with an increased potential for crashes. And there's kind of a chart on the right side of the screen that, you know, is obviously made by an engineer, because it looks terrible and has a bunch of numbers. But what it's, what it essentially says is you've got access points per mile, I mean, if you say 10 is kind of a baseline. If you double that to 20, you get about 30% increase in in crashes. If you double it again to go to to 40, it's about a 60% increase in crashes, so you can kind of get the trend that the more access points per mile that you have, crashes go up in kind of an exponential type of a way. So it's the main reason that we try to limit the amount of access, especially to territorial streets, but that in in other places. Second is the roadway capacity itself. You know, kind of keeping the driveways to a minimum and focusing the intersections helps traffic move through, more cars through. So we see an increase of about 20 to 45% in capacity, and what that means is the road lasts longer before you have to add more lanes with the increased traffic.
So if I could summarize, then limiting the amount of driveways makes it safer and able to handle more cars and makes the road last longer.
Correct.
Yeah, so I guess I just want to be clear with, you know, both the council and member of the public, is that that that's the reason staff asked about it. It's because essentially there's a huge public, public benefit to it, and because they're doing their jobs. So I guess if anyone was curious about it, that's kind of the 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 source of it. With that, I would open it up to feedback from the council, Alder Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I am extremely leery of the traffic analysis that's been done so far, because we have yet to see what the impact is really going to be of the middle school and the grade school, which will have more cars, parents dropping kids off, and we're not going to see that at the beginning of this school year either. The second thing I will say is that I have had more people contact me within the surrounding neighborhood who do not support this school, not the school itself. I do think St. Ambrose would be a wonderful addition to the city of Verona, but I agree with what I'm hearing from my constituents, which is, this is not the right space for this, they have been very clear about, they have a small number of students now, but they do want to grow. I think one of the comments that that sort of hit home for me was, someone said, you know, they're trying to put 10 pounds of potatoes in a five pound sack. It isn't a large parcel. There's not, if they get to the point where they're, they have doubled the number of students, what would happen to that school if it's, then if they find somewhere else to go so that they can accommodate that many more, more students? So I, there, I I'm glad to hear that they're looking into the environmental impacts, especially with stormwater and flooding. But I don't, don't support this development.
Other feedback from the council? Alder Journey, then Alder Ryan.
So I too have had several constituents from that neighborhood not in support of this project. And then also the supporting comments, about half of those comments were people from outside of the city of Verona. So they were not our constituents. And then there was a comment on the St. Andrews Church side, that at some point, they were looking at opening up the elementary school. So to me, that just made it more clear that there should then be shared parking and access space between the school and the church. And if there was that shared space, then there would be that one access point coming off of Main Street that's currently there with another one going on to Harriet Avenue, so there would be two entrances and exits there. So I fully support the staff, what they have suggested in terms of shared parking, and that the the buyer and the seller should get together and try to figure that out.
Alder Ryan. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, so just to reiterate what I said at the public hearing, I think, actually, first, first of all, I like Alder Cronin's analogy about the potato, I think, when you, when you look at the space, it does, it's very, it looks very small for what they're trying to achieve at first blush. I in terms of the feedback that I've gotten, it's, if I had to put a percentage on it, I would say it was probably 60, 40 in favor from the feedback that I've gotten in favor of the school being there. On the surface of it, I don't have a problem with the school being there, I do think that they're going to run into a, you know, they're sort of delaying the inevitable dilemma, which is the growth issue ultimately, but what I, what I dislike mostly is is making dumb decisions, and I I really think, to be frank, putting the parking lot where they propose is dumb, and I I also don't like having all of this impervious you know, surface area, so thinking about the concerns of the people who live in the immediate area, they've already said that there's issues with runoff, and to me, adding a parking lot there would just contribute to that problem. They're concerned about Silent Street and about that cutting through. To me, it's, it's like a no brainer, putting the the parking lot on the opposite side and combining it with the the church parking lot, which, by the way, has has basically opposite business hours, and therefore, I mean, I I drive past there all the time, and it it looks very, very vacant 99% of the time. And so I I understand they're different entities, I get all of that, but it's, you know, let's, like, let's make a logical choice that is utilizing our space well, and, you know, so having it's kind of like having a car, people own cars, and it turns out that car usage, you know, is like 5 or 10%, and 90, 90 to 95% of the time, the car sits there doing nothing, and and the parking lot is very similar. Why not maximize the utilization of that space? What I do like about the church being there is infill, so I would much rather see us infill a space rather than than expand the city out farther than it needs to be. So on balance, I would say that I'm in favor of the of the school being there, but I would like the parking lot to be merged with the church.
Alder Touche.
I I agree with Alder Ryan's final statement, you know, I I shared parking lot, I think, is key, I mean, as I, my my elementary school years were spent in Catholic schools, and they were always tied to a church, and his point is spot on. They, their, their busy times do not overlap, and it it makes complete sense to do shared parking, I mean, even I can't count how many items we've talked about, especially around the pools, where, you know, pools kind of make sense around schools, because summer pools, you know, their parking is completely different times, and all that solid surface being, you know, being occupied for two different purposes right next to each other is is really inefficient, really not a great idea. You know, I think the the church and the school are definitely going to have some challenges, because they are trying to be two different entities, sharing the same space. I think they need to work through those. You know, when it comes to traffic, yeah, obviously, having Verona area school district right there, and adding this is is real, but on the flip side, you know, the church has had classrooms for a while, now admittedly, they've been vacant. And I I don't know the history of why the church's school shut down, and it definitely happened before it came to Verona. I have to believe it's always been in the plans to have, you know, acknowledge that there's the kind of traffic that it can draw, so the traffic concerns don't worry me as much, obviously, there's going to have to be some coordination between the academy and the Verona school, so that not everyone's trying to get to, get their children to either location at the same exact time, you know, high school's going to bump into You know, high school is going to bump into that with Epic. They are going to be coordinating. So not everyone's rushing to the same intersection at the same time. That can be worked out. Space feels a little tight, you know, and and, you know, the neighbors worrying about, you know, this being added. Again, there's already a school there. It's just unfortunately, it's vacant right now. So I don't I don't feel like the use is that different. Lastly, a few people have indicated that the plans we are seeing may not be the final plans. Or at least the latest plans, and I'm curious if Adam can speak on that at all. Thank you.
Mr. Sayer.
Those are the ones we have. I mean, any any plan changes. So I wouldn't be shocked if plans don't change, but these are the most current ones we have. At least that's why my memory serves me correctly.
Alder Cole.
I will say in response to Aldo Touche that I did ask about like coordinating times with the schools. And they did say that they were willing to, you know, alter their like start and end times. So that way they wouldn't be creating more traffic. So I think that was a positive thing as well. Because that was, you know, a concern I had too and like that, you know, that particular intersection, like with the crosswalk there can get real crazy. And they said they were willing to alter their start and end times. Which I think was good. And they said that also, I asked about busing and they don't do busing currently, but they do say a lot of people carpool. So as far as like the parking is concerned, yeah, they said they don't even really generally have a lot of cars in their parking lot. So having a big parking lot doesn't make a lot of sense to me. As well, yeah, like, I mean, I get the church doesn't, so they aren't going to do that. But I wish something could be worked out with that because I don't see the need to have a giant parking lot. Especially if they're saying people are carpooling, they don't have a lot of, they said something about 23 cars are parked there in general at their other location. Like, there's just like 20 some cars there. That's not a lot to warrant a lot of impervious surfaces. And also in regards to like runoff and like stormwater and snow melt and whatnot, I don't know if we could bring in their person who did the the study on that or is doing the engineering regarding that. Because I know they they thought that they had worked out a really good solution to deal with the water. So it wouldn't cause any flooding or anything to the neighbors behind there. And I don't know if we could bring that person in to talk about that a little bit.
Mr. Sayer, do you know the stormwater engineer or the person covering that is in the audience?
Carla, do you know the answer to that? I guess just we can ask Carla if she knows.
So I think Wade is the one, Wade Wise.
He does have his hand up, so we can bring him in to answer.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to answer that question. The concerns that have been brought to my attention, stormwater runoff heading easterly through the residential neighborhood. A lot of which is generated by the church parking lot. The solution that we're presenting is adding to that runoff is this approximate three acres where the proposed development would be located. In its current condition, a portion of that drains easterly as well. So while it is a grass field during a large storm event, there is water generated from this northerly three acres that heads east to the problem area. So what we've conceptually designed and planned to implement would be stormwater management facilities and storm sewers that route the water northerly to the storm sewer system. Of course, slow down, infiltrated, cleaned up, all of those good things. And connected to that storm sewer on the north side for safe conveyance. So we're actually taking away watershed area that currently contributes to the east.
Thank you. Other questions on stormwater engineering, as long as Wade's up here? All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Alder Cole.
Can we also talk a little bit about the silent streets? Access point or I mean, is that?
I would definitely encourage people like if, you know, wait to express their opinions on that. Because that's ultimately a city decision.
We talked about it heavily at Plan Commission, so I just thought if people here wanted to talk about it.
Alder Ricky, then Alder Cronin, then I think Alder Ryan.
Yeah, I just remember several years ago when we were talking about extending Silent Street. That was a major sticking point with the neighbors there wanting Silent Street to remain silent. And with the church folks wanting to keep the green space to loan out to sports players. So I don't really understand why all of a sudden this is all, it's all okay for this whole parcel to basically become impervious surface. The shared parking is would be a must for me to get on board with this development. And, you know, I think it just makes sense for Silent Street to actually be a street.
Alder Cronin, then Alder Ryan, and then myself.
I am not in favor of any extension of Silent Street from County Highway M to where it currently exists.
Alder Ryan, then me, then Alder Journey.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I probably beating a drum here. But again, I think moving the parking lot sort of mitigates some of this. I am not especially in favor of having Silent Street come through either. And I feel like if we move the parking lot and combine it with the church, that mitigates that problem in the first place. And it addresses, you know, a large portion of the residents' concerns who live in that immediate area.
Yeah, Aldo's throw in, yeah, I don't I don't want to see Silent Street opened up at all. I think there's enough, there's enough traffic issues through that neighborhood. We don't need to make them any worse by opening up Silent Street. So I'm against that. Alder Journey.
I'm also against that. I don't want to add another traffic choke point to Highway M. And as I read it, ordinance number 14-839 would prohibit using that Silent Street right of way for any such purpose that's proposed in this plan.
Thank you. Other comments either on Silent Street or on the project in general? Alder Posey.
Sorry, no, I think most of what I'm sharing has already been said. But I think one of the thoughts I've had through this entire discussion and looking at this and the feedback from the residents neighboring property is that I know what I've seen in my district has been a lot of mixed retail, retail drive-throughs and a concern I have is I'm looking at this and going, you know, wouldn't be a school be a great option, a place that's not used necessarily 24, you know, even, you know, 16 hours a day and it allows kids running and playing and time on the weekends. And so I guess that's part of me looking at this going, I think, as far as a green space usage. If the drainage can get figured out and everything else. I mean, it's a good option compared to some of the other things we've been presented as far as building community. I would agree with sharing the parking. It doesn't really make sense that they can't figure out an MOU. I don't know the reason. They felt the need that everything has to be 100% separate. And they can't build a sharing relationship with that space. But I would definitely say, I would ask that of residents who have reached out to us. Is if you are against a school in that facility, in that location, what are the other recommendations? Because as we're seeing elsewhere in the city, the things are happening and people are selling property. And we are developing it because that's what's happening. And so I would like to hear, kind of looking at it from that perspective. Is this the best use that could help against park community? I do have concerns about the traffic side as well. But again, I think it takes coordination. And hopefully, the school district and St. Ambrose would be able to work that out so that it's safe. Potentially, maybe only right-hand turns out of there, whatever it is. So that that way, you know, we don't know what this looks like. And Alder Cronin is exactly right on her, you know, the traffic study was done in June 2020. We don't even have normal traffic for us right now. Just regular activity isn't normal. And to do the traffic study right now and say that that's accurate is not. So I would say that those things need to be further discussed and put into place. And again, I would love, you know, if we're against that, please, residents who have felt, you know, compelled to reach out about that. What other facilities other than a school would be a good option in this location?
Alder Cole and Aldo Touche.
I'd just like to say in general, I think that I'm in favor of this. I just think diversification of education in our city is and our our school district in general is something we're proud of. We have charter schools. We have two immersion schools. I think this is a really, would be a really neat addition to our to our community. And since there are people coming into into our city from outside to come to this school. I mean, they'd be, you know, going to our businesses in our town and it could potentially bring families into our city to like move here. So I think it's a good option. I, like I said, in general, I'm in favor of it. I would like to see the the parking and access point thing figured out. But in general, I I think it's a good use of space in that particular area.
Aldo Touche.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm generally in favor of it. Definitely has to have shared parking. They need to get over whatever difficulties they have on that. The traffic study, we've done a lot of studies in that area. Even when, as Alder Ricky brought up, when we talked about pulling Silent Street all the way through, there was a traffic study done then. And I don't believe that a whole lot has changed in that area to warrant different sets of data. You know, other than the up and coming high school move, which you're not going to get any data on anyways right now. Really warranting, I think that high school's probably brought more traffic there and with it moving, I think that's going to change. So I think if we really wanted to push it, we could ask them to look at previous data collected in that area and apply it to the site if that's really a sticking issue. Thank you.
Mr. Sayer.
Jess, do you want to comment on just when the data was collected?
Yeah, the data was collected prior to COVID, so it was in November of 2019 that the counts were taken. And the videos of the quarter were used. So there was, the high school was still still open and the middle school was still at the Badger Ridge site. But it was before everything shut down and traffic fell off a cliff.
Further comments on the concept plan? Mr. Sayer, do you feel like you've gotten adequate feedback from the council?
Yes, I think what I'm hearing is generally, and I'll speak generally here, is that people are supportive of the use, supportive of the location. But some of the traffic and the parking kind of needs to get worked out. And that's just generally is what I'm hearing from the majority. So, yes, thank you.
Okay, I, yeah, I didn't I didn't necessarily see 100%, you know, for or against. Which is, I think, typical at the concept plan review stage. Last chance for comments on this one. Seeing no further hands. Anything further from Plan Commission?
I think I'm all done. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before we move on to Public Works, I need to take a bathroom break. So I'm gonna say we're gonna recess for six minutes and reconvene here at 9:55. So if you need to use the bathroom or do anything else, now's the time to do so. See you in six minutes.
I'm ready. You're ready.
Excellent. It is 9:56, so everyone got an extra minute. With that, we'll move on to 9D, Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Aldo Touche.
Thank you. I apologize. I was unable to combine all these items, so I want to go through them as quickly as reasonably possible. Item 91, I am making a motion to approve a professional services agreement with AECOM for Project ID 2020-109 North Main Street Water Main Replacement. That is not to exceed $39,550.
Motion by Aldo Touche. Is there a second?
Excellent. This agreement is with AECOM for the replacement of the water main on North Main Street adjacent to the school district property. This water main has experienced multiple breaks recently and needs replacement. In fact, at this time, it has been shut down because of the number of breaks. The agreement includes following services. Oh, my goodness. Survey work, utility coordination, preliminary and final engineering plans, permitting, project specification. Option for probable construction costs and bidding assistance. Our Public Works staff is recommending that the contract with AECOM be approved. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Just to clarify, for clerk Clark, I have Alder Ryan as the second on that motion. Motion before the body. Discussion on the motion.
I just want to add, the, we did contact, this was put in in the 90s. We did contact the manufacturer about this pipe and they acknowledged that during the curing process, there may have been some issues. Unfortunately, it only came with a one-year warranty and that has long gone. So it has survived this long, but sadly, it is overdue for replacement.
Makes sense. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of approving a professional services agreement with AECOM for Project ID 2020-109 North Main Street Water Replacement, Water Main Replacement in the amount specified, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Aldo Touche.
Next up, 92D. I make an motion to approve a professional services agreement with AECOM for Project ID 2020- whoa, whoa, whoa. Oh, yeah, that's right, sorry. Project ID 2020-115 Verona Water System Risk and Resilience Assessment and Emergency Response Plan.
Motion by Aldo Touche. Is there a second?
And I want to add, this contract is not to exceed $49,300.
And I'm seeing a second by Alder Ryan, Aldo Touche.
Great. This is the first time we've had to do one of these. This agreement is with AECOM is for the preparation and updating the water utility risk and resilience assessment and emergency response plan. Back in October 23 of 2018, the American Water Infrastructure Act, the AWIA, was signed into law, which amends the Safe Drinking Water Act. The regulatory requirements for AWIA are directing the update that is due in June, by June 30 of next year to the Environmental Protection Agency. Our public staff has reviewed and recommending the contract with AECOM be approved. Thank you.
You have heard the explanation. Questions, comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of a professional services agreement with AECOM for Project ID 2020-115 Verona Water System Risk and Resilience Assessments and Emergency Response Plans in the amount specified, say aye. Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Aldo Touche.
Next up, item 93. I make an emotion to approve a professional service agreement with JT Engineering for Inspection Services at Sugar Creek Commons Public Improvement Project. The contract shall not exceed $59,839.50 and is contingent upon legal counsel review of the contract language.
Motion by Aldo Touche. Is there a second? Second by Alder Ryan, Aldo Touche.
This agreement is for the Inspection Services Circuit Comments for Public Improvements. JT Engineering is also working with the city on inspection services at the Woods at Cathedral Point and administering street opening permits for for utility projects. Public Works has reviewed and recommend that the contract with JT Engineering be approved. Please note that this is a pass-through cost to the developers, ultimately costs the city nothing.
And if I may, which developers is covering that?
Sugar Creek Comments. So blah, blah, blah. Yeah, great question. Darren, you online?
Forward Development.
Forward. Thank you.
So we're seeing some movement on that project, which I think I think is exciting for everybody. Motion before the body. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of a professional services agreement with JT Engineering for Inspection Services at Sugar Creek Commons Public Improvement Project? With the condition noted, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Alder Touche.
Next up, item 94, I make an emotion to approve a resolution number R-20-032 relocation order and determination of necessity necessity related to Project ID 2018-108 Eastside Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Project.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Journey. Alder Touche.
We approved most of this last council meeting. This is a little bit of a formality that was missed. The city is working on the replacement of the Eastside Sanitary Sewer Interceptor. The project requires the city to acquire easements and easement interests from adjacent land owners. The resolution approves the overall easement needs which are attached to the resolution and allows city staff to work on acquisition of all properties within the project limits. The resolution also confirms two important statutory steps. First, the resolution acts as the city's relocation order for the project. Second, the resolution confirms that the project is necessary and for a public purpose. Both these steps are required for the city to acquire the properties and property interests by condemnation if that becomes necessary. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number R-20-032 Relocation Order and Determination of Necessity Related Necessity Related to Project ID 2018-108 Eastside Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Project, say aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Alder Touche.
Next up, item 9D5, I'm making a motion to approve an agreement with Dane County for Restoration of Badger Mill Creek Contingent on City Attorney and City Administrator Review.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Journey. Alder Touche.
This agreement with Dane County is for work associated with the Eastside Interceptor Project in lieu of payment for easements necessary for the Eastside Interceptor and future Lincoln Street Stormwater Management Facility Projects. The city will be performing, clearing and grubbing the earthwork elements along Eastside Interceptor Project while Dane County will be be performing and financing in-stream improvements to Badger Mill Creek. The work elements are being included with the construction package for the Eastside Interceptor Project. City staff and Dane County staff have drafted the agreement. The city attorney and city administrator have reviewed the agreement and recommends approval by the council. Please note, we are the first half of the approval. After we approve, this will go to the county for approval.
Thank you for that explanation. I'll just throw in my own two cents. I think it's great to see the city and the county working together to improve the Badger Mill Creek and being responsible towards the environment. Any discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of approving the agreement with Dane County for the restoration of Badger Mill Creek with contingency specified, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Anything further from Public Works?
Nothing.
Thank you. We will move on to 10A under New Business and we have a discussion and possible possible action regarding a professional services agreement with McMahon Associates, Inc. Mr. Sayre.
Thank you. The proposed agreement, the proposed agreement will provide management consulting services to assist the fire chief. The common council approved a service agreement in May of 2020 that is set to expire on August 31. Staff is requesting an extension of the agreement for three additional months until November 30. Fire Chief Mahaka's former position has been filled, excuse me, has not been filled and will be discussed at a future personnel meeting. It'll be discussed actually at the end of month of August. The goal is to fill the chief, the goal is to fill Chief Mahaka's former position by the end of November, thus reducing the need for the services agreement with McMahon Associates. So once again, this is going to help fill the gap. Right now, Dan is short-staffed. He was internally promoted, so his former position is not filled and this position, this service agreement is providing him with some administrative support to kind of get some of those things done and also is providing him with guidance and mentoring as well. So it's been a very valuable agreement for him. I'd be happy answering questions from the council.
Alder Cronin.
What is the cost of the extension?
It's $4,000 a month, so the total will be $12,000.
Further questions, comments, or motions from the council? We are looking, of course, for a potential motion to pass this if anyone is interested in continuing to do so. Alder Cole.
I'll make a motion to approve a professional services agreement with McMahon Associates Incorporated.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Ricky, I believe. Any further discussion on this item? I do want to say I think it's, I think it's valuable to, one, to help cover staff time and not not burn out Chief Mahaka. I also think it's it's useful to provide, you know, support and and consultation for city staff and and help people succeed and do the best that they can in their position. But I think this is a good thing. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of approving the professional services agreement with McMahon Associates, Inc., say aye.
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 Oppose, no? This motion passes. Next, we'll move on to 10B. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution Number R-20-033 Creating a Sustainability Task Force. Mr. Sayre.
Thank you. The common council recently directed staff to create a sustainability committee. The task force should be comprised of seven, minimum of seven members appointed by the mayor and council that would meet on an as-needed basis. The task force would focus their efforts to address the to-do list from the sustainability resolution that was adopted in April 2019, as well as assist assist the city in identifying sustainability goals and objectives to be included in the city's comprehensive plan. Topics from the sustainability resolution that was adopted last year included to build the green infrastructure, support natural areas, make our infrastructure more resilient to deal with the effects of climate change, conserve our natural resources, retrofit city-owned properties, and to amend city ordinances to mitigate the impacts of climate change.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, or motions? Alder Cronin and then Alder Ryan.
Is there a term for how long people would serve on this committee and what happens if we don't identify seven people immediately?
Mr. Sayre.
I think Mayor Diaz and I had a conversation about possibly having five on there. So I guess that's that's something you could look at as well as possibly reducing that number to to, you know, something that's lower. We haven't identified a term. We could identify a term if there was a desire to put a term in place on that. But there was not, we did not identify this in as part of the resolution.
Yeah, if I could clarify that too, it is a task force. So it wouldn't necessarily be a permanent thing. Is that is that correct, Mr. Sayre?
Correct. So we made initially a task force because right now, I think from a staff level, we're not exactly clear, really clear what the script's going to be doing. So initially, we wanted to kind of start it off as a task force, the focus on the resolution from 2019, possibly looking towards our comprehensive plan and trying to incorporate ideas into that as well. It could potentially evolve into a committee at some point, but we wanted to at least start with the task force of it's a focus area that, you know, members could focus into that sustainability efforts. So it could be disbanded at any point. It could also be continued or modified to actually become an unofficial city committee at some point as well.
And then I guess if I could add one thing, I actually I had similar thoughts that I think seven. My issue is that that sometimes you want working groups to be the right size. And my worry was that seven would potentially be too many people to get a lot of stuff done and that potentially a group of five people might function better and be able to get more stuff done. Of course, the resolution does say seven and it's something I thought about after the after the packet was put out to the public. So that's currently what it says. Obviously, if there was a motion, it could be clarified in there. If that's what you wanted to do. Alder Ryan.
Mayor, so maybe a comment or a couple of comments and a question. I think the initiative is tremendous and I'm very much in support of it. And I would put my hand up to be a part of that. And then a question would be, is there, are there dollars allocated to this task force at this point in time? And if I assume no is the answer. And if not, given that we're entering the budget process, is there a need, if we wanted to action things in the coming financial year, what would be the timeline in terms of putting forth proposals in terms of spending?
Yeah, that that should be done through the 2021 budget process, which we are currently discussing now. In the past, we typically, since the sustainability thing is somewhat new, we put it under the the common council budget. And we've had contingency funds for there, but that is definitely a discussion that we would want to have going forward, I think. My understanding, Mr. Sayres, is next Monday is when finance will be talking about the common council budget?
I believe so. Yeah, I think, and you're correct, Luke, this year we had $80,000 in contingency and the intent was that if there was a sustainability project, we pull it from that money. Obviously, once again, COVID wrecked any ability to even kind of look at that. And it's being used as contingency versus sustainability. But yeah, I mean, I think the best place if there were to be funding for it would be kind of in the council budget, as Mayor Diaz explained. Just because it's a task force and not a it's not really a city department. So I think I think it'd be good for, if you do fund some money allocating in that council budget, but then maybe one of the directives of this committee would be to explore ways that you could utilize or spend that money on sustainability efforts. I think that's that's probably the appropriate way. And then ultimately, the council or the finance committee would have sign off on what those directives or ideas are. And if there is a budget component, it would be wise to probably put at least one, if not two alders on this committee, just because end of the day, the council controls the purse strings.
Alder Cole.
I'm making a motion to approve Resolution Number R-20-033 Creating a Sustainability Task Force. Very excited about this.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ryan. Anything to add, Alder Cole?
No, thank you.
I guess I will throw this out to the body in general and just say, is is seven the right number? Could we could we say a minimum of five and up to up to seven for the task force? Because I guess we can do, I mean, I guess council makes the rules, so however we want to do it. But I guess that's what I would ask from the body if people were interested in it. Alder Ricky.
Well, I'm also very interested in this topic. And so now you you know there are at least three alders who are, so I don't know if there's a cap on the number of alders that could be on the committee, but that might increase the number to seven, just given that.
That's a fair point. Further discussion of the motion? Alder Journey.
So I definitely support this resolution. So are we, have we defined whether or not it's going to be five or seven with three alders on it?
Currently, it is set to seven as the motion came from the packet and three alders have expressed interest. I assume this is going to function the way other appointments where the mayor myself puts them forward, council approves or rejects. Mr. Sayre, is that is that correct?
Correct. I'd have to pull up the resolution language, but I believe it's, and I'll pull it up. I think I have it right here. So it says, the task force will consist of a minimum of seven members appointed by the mayor and the council and meet on an as-needed basis. So it says minimum as well. So I mean, if you desire, you could always change it to a minimum of five. And then you could put seven on there, nine on there, whatever you want. But I would say, yes, you know, ultimately, both you and the council, Luke, would approve the people being appointed.
Do I need to amend my motion?
Um, we could ask for unanimous consent if people are on board or we could make an amendment. I guess I will, I will try, we'll try as a unanimous consent. Do we have unanimous consent to say a minimum of five?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So therefore, that has been set to a minimum of five. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number R-20-033 Creating a Sustainability Task Force as described in the packet with a minimum of five members? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that motion passes. And I would just say, if any members of the public have stuck around or if the alders or anyone else is interested, they should definitely get names to me because I would I would love to see a lot of public interest in this. I think there is, but sometimes we have trouble getting what's happening at the city level out to the public. With that, we will move on to 10C, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Potential Developments and Use of Public Funds in the Verona Technology Park. Mr. Sayre.
Thank you. Staff is working on two development projects in the Verona Technology Park that may require the need for tax increment financing, TIF. The use of TIF may be necessary for public infrastructure improvements required for the development and to help serve the Technologies Park. Staff is requesting a closed session discussion with the common council.
Thank you. With that, I guess I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. Alder Cole.
I'll make a motion to move into closed session regarding potential developments and use of public funds in the Verona Technology Park. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Section 19.85 Peron 1 Peron E of the Wisconsin Statutes for the Purpose of Deliberating or Negotiating the Investing of Public Funds or Conducting Other Specified Public Business Whenever Competitive or Bargaining Reasons Require a Closed Session. The common council may reconvene in open session and take action on a closed session item.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin. This is, of course, a roll call vote. If the clerk would read the roll.
Alder Cole.
Aye.
Alder Posey.
Aye.
Alder Ricky.
Aye.
Alder Ryan.
Aye.
Alder Touche.
Aye.
Alder Cronin.
Aye.
Alder Journey.
Aye.
Alder Kemp. Sorry.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Kemp has not rejoined us quite yet. And Mr. Sayre, could you give us a quick refresher on how to join the closed session?
Once again, you're going to actually log out, leave this meeting, and then you will then log into the the separate invite that I sent in a separate email, which is a Zoom meeting. So once again, just get out of this meeting. Evan's gone. Get into the other meeting and then we'll go back close session. We'll do the opposite. You'll log out that Zoom meeting and log back into the webinar so we can all adjourn the meeting and go home, I guess, stay home and sleep. So.
Great.
Sounds good.
Okay, okay, that's one, two, four, five, six.
Six.
Waiting for a camera.
Come on, Kate, you can do it. I'm making a motion to adjourn.
There we go. Motion by Alder Touche, seconded by Alder Cronin. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. And we adjourned at 11:05 PM. Thank you all.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.